My grandpa had a store there in the other.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, the nose is always going to change like that when Mr. Nelson stood up here. I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Right. Who was that bar from up there? Years ago, but not some time ago.
What else?
Just about she's got a little right.
I don't know. But I know what you're talking about.
You're talking about. The ball can't. Come on, come on, come on. No, no, no. Well, right in the carton, there was a little juice with that, that's about. Yeah, but that wasn't a liquid, like, typical. Mom, we came down and picked all our stuff, two dollars. Oh, okay. I'm glad he growed his top back tomorrow.
I bet your daddy didn't know that.
No, but his brother knew where it was.
I think it was Admiral of that, of your dad, who was child, twelve children, and he could have gotten caught in it.
That was kind of dry, kind of, you know, no, no. They don't have, they don't have an open bar, but they just have that.
Where did that?
Madison.
Madison, yeah, Honey, Honey, Black, Honey, Black, Man, they changed all that, did.
Yeah.
I would have never believed that Madison Kennedy was being wet.
Well, you know, I'm sure he thought that, thought that, uh, Honey, Black, White.
He did.
Uh-huh.
And that, that's what changed it up. I mean, that's how it flew in a paper around it. We get that changed, that's all it is.
But they said that look at your player up there, and they said it was on the ballot. I'm like, no way. But it passed.
I was in Kansas and reading headlines in the seven eleven on the newspaper there, you know, you ever go by. Then out of state, you always looked at newspapers when you go by. And they were voting, they had voted in that county to go dry.
Oh!
They had went to dry. After all the years they've been wet, for since the beginning of the town. And they done had nothing wrong there. They, they go dry.
Bill Gons almost got that. I'm the one standing in the bar, and he was like, maybe two.
And they say, they say the liability insurance is what do it, and all these other stores like Walgreens and everybody else, selling their own wine and stuff, you're just taking the money out of the bar business. But they say liability insurance in the bar, or it just went over the pump, you know.
You remember that? But we think like every election, we have a wet dry election in Texas County, so it's.
I remember that. Before we had to do it statewide, just by a man.
Well, the county was dry. And that's as quick as they wanted to keep it dry. And couples would come around, and we'd be like that. But we live out that road, he comes to roll. I support him. And he would always tell me, he says, I'd rather have a bar than to take the state get some revenue than that, this moonshine did. I'm gonna support him. And he voted for, for wet county.
Yeah, but we have to, that's mine, my, 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 my. Well, my kids don't give a run. Oh, I should have made one.
I know what you're talking about.
You're right, I wouldn't have needed a little help.
On my packet, those.
Yep. Well.
I would also tolerate, but you. Yeah.
Robert and Daddy was the O L N. And he knew, about the time they did my daddy, good friends. And he, oh, with the wet dry election, he got really involved in that, in the Jack Davis, you know, everything. And the, the loot, and he was the guy I always come see my daddy. I remember that. I was a German boy and I. What do you want? He said, well, he wants me to do what I can to get this wet dry election to vote wet. And, uh, this is back when people were poor. He'd probably give my daddy about fifty dollars to go gas money. Go around them all up, down there around the Peter River, and all the voters that kept through a pretty thing back then. When the votes would come in, there's forty votes down there, maybe something like thirty-nine or one. My daddy was a stiff all night. Who was lying to me?
Who was that one person?
Who was that one person lying to me? And, uh, but I guess it's legal. But, you know, my daddy was a poor man. He, he gave fifty dollars by gas, run around, see all them people.
That's a lot, huh?
You think I must read me, it took out the moonshine and the pot when it went wet, I think it really did. Because I remember in old times, that sale all over the county.
Yeah?
My, I think the lake smell when the wind got just like coming out of that phone book there, I was a young'un, all of a sudden, so I would go for a check out, and they would.
So we used to throw corn off the truck. Now, I'll come home with a big old load of corn. And you had to drive the young ones, because they had my bros was all in there. And if I dropped, just throw the corn off the truck into the, under the shed, back to that thing, whistle it off. It's like, now, still, most of them, they don't even know what.
And, and sugar.
Yeah, yeah, well, he got sauce on me, that was a load of sugar from that camp. And then they come up there and bust it up.
That's why you had no grocery stores all out in the communities around. Because the state would monitor how much sugar, if you bought house, and, uh, sugar revenue, if you're looking for that, who, they'd be watching, you see who come, bought sugar.
Well, that's how he got stopped that night.
Probably.
Well, that load of sugar coming back.
That's exactly what happened. But what they done, they built, everybody had a little store, like, all this grocery and all, little stores all around. Everybody get a certain amount. And you could, you could miss them once every two or three weeks, you know, and everybody made money, all pretty good for the company. You know. I remember in old time, I was talking about it. I remember when they dynamited one, right, there were, uh, temp grates, frame grates, all kind of together to go in the locking grid right there. There was a sale right there, and I, oh, right there in the, the drums, the sale there were revenue, were dynamited, it took action, all of them drums, like, sale there in the wood right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then all the way, you could see, you could see, it's long, then all the way, something, I don't even know where they used to be sales, you know.
Well, my uncle's corporation must have been a little one, which was behind that shed where we threw the corn off.
They'd be the only one that had it at your house, huh?
It is. But the next morning, after they had been there on that night and busted it all up, we all went out there looking. And they literally, all those big glass, he had a big glass jug.
Mm.
And they literally broke them off.
And my five gallon jug. I think we got a drunky called Gimme Jug.
Yeah. And what usually got them caught was the competition. It was like drug business up that time. Drug business, he usually doing pretty good when he shat somebody else's turf, and then he could spread it out.
Or killed.
My daddy had a uncle, he grabbed one of his brothers. He was a woodsman. He had a house, business, business, you know, and all that stuff. But if he could ever get over the whiskey, he'd stay drunk, till he drunk it all out, so. And, well, two hundred dollars, most. One time, he stayed drunk for about a month. Dad was worried about it, he dropped off his uncle, daddy, where's he getting his whiskey from? He worried. And it was real dry time to him. And dad said, he, he found somebody with a moonshine still, 'cause he was probably with him. And they giving him all the booze he want, and then he keep his mouth shut. And my dad thought, it's real dry, and he said, oh, that old ballet truck he built, he always heads up, he's, he's gotta be going somewhere rather than this water. And he said, he gotta have water back in the town. Dad went in there near where the water hole was, and he checked all his hogs in. He called up the hogs, they was drunk. I'll leave you back. And he said, okay, I know what I'll do. So he walked in, and saw the steel was there at that water hole. And he come to town, and went to the old courthouse on the lawn, and he knew who was in the dock. And he just said, for family reasons, I'm watching the move that steel. And in two days, that steel gone, and we call up uncle, uncle, Tom Cannon was his name, quiet woodsman. Into them cannons, but he, but he dug it up. But that's the way daddy handled it. And the way he figured it out, he called up Buckdove, some horse, none of them was bucked.
That's the way they, that's why they had hog fangs in those counties, still, me. And everybody had hog fangs, you had it all over the county. And that was, when you had hog fangs, you had moonshine seals. That pour out that ash when they got to the union.
On holiday, yeah.
And it was not worth that smell, speak of fine, you know. One thing left in the, that's all.
I know we're still at lunch, but this is a reminder to the board regarding this special meeting at three o'clock. Um, the way that ordinance is laid out is, what the board would do today is accept the application from whatever entity. But then we would have to wait for third cases from the property appraisers. So, you know, that is a step in the process that we, we can't forget. Um, I don't think it would take long to receive that report back, and, but that is something that, that is an additional step. And they have, wanna have the ordinance in front of us at three o'clock. It's easy to forget these steps.
So when the meeting, and this is open up, is that the first thing that, I mean, I guess we're gonna talk about it first. Would you think that's a question?
But it's organized, too.
Yeah. I would agree with you, face to face, but I think you could probably put it clearer than I can.
All right, I'll do about this.
Um.
We're talking about, we're talking about the topic, maybe.
Yes, yes. Well, now, we're gonna do the, uh, uh, Gulf Coast first, right?
That might be easier.
Huh?
The South Coast first, I would say. So what you say, France still okay, he goes through that process, we just have to check, he goes through the process, and then once they figure out he had, he paid taxes the year before. That does weigh that, is what I'm understanding.
So that's what we're gonna say, we're gonna accept the application, it goes through the process, without telling any of them?
And deny, we're gonna actually deny the application from Gulf Coast today?
I, I kinda wondered, can we, can we deny that from today, so we have proof that he did pay taxes the year before, and he's not qualified?
That's one of the reasons, then, he's not bringing his job.
And then, that's something about a lot of the, that's back to that, well, he gonna, he gonna throw up, hard to him, what's this? You know, they gonna give him a, he, he did, he paid taxes the year before, too.
I don't think he'll do that.
I don't think Ralph will do it.
I don't think he will either. But, like, I mean, then, oh.
You just, the possibility is there, you know, that it could.
You just, well, I'm asking.
Some more time, you have, you have to tell them that, right, this.
You know, that's, that's what I feel.
Running, running this now act, we're taking, continuing to just not say actually.
No.
We gotta tell him.
We need to work it.
Go ahead, go ahead, tell him, get over with.
Right.
You accept the application, but you, you cannot make a determination until you have the assessment from the property appraiser, right? We can't make a, this is, we do, we have.
We've already got that, though.
Y'all fuck with it.
But has, that, by hearsay, have they submitted to show it something in, or we showed them?
We'll have, we'll have to have folks from court outlets, to be able to access it.
If they're gonna ask, why are we denying it, you don't have.
That's, that's proof, that's why.
Yeah, so, uh, so what we should do then is.
Just say it for the record.
Accept the application, and then.
Deny it, and take the reason why.
I would think so.
Cause there are two reasons why we're denied. One is that you pay taxes on property a year prior. Secondly, is the, uh, by no admission, if you can, I'm afraid you can't do that.
Well, because if you look at the ordinance, there is a step for property appraisal review before you have final review and adoption by the commission. So. And we don't have that from the property appraisers. Let's accept, let's take the property thing that is there, accept the application. And then, uh, I mean, that, once it, uh, uh, vetted, or whatever, then they will, then it will become, because it says, uh, um, I don't remember, uh, eight, eight, I think? On the, um, in the ordinance here, it says, upon receipt of the property appraisal report, the T C D A director shall schedule the application on the next available commission meeting.
Well, now, does this constitute the property appraisal report, uh, on purpose?
Uh, no, relax.
But I go along with it today. And if we gotta go through the property appraiser and get something else, then it ain't gonna happen today.
And my understanding from Mr. Curtis is that he, he had been in contact with the property appraisal office. And I just spoke to the property appraiser, he said, hey, call me back, and give us a tip for later, okay?
You won't contact, prove, see if he gets that something, too?
I did find out that he said that.
Isn't that beer you got next up?
Do what?
That beer you got next up?
Yeah, neat beer, huh?
It's Miller, Coors. But my son works at Miller Coors.
Yeah, that's a lot of, that's good coffee, too, but.
He gets several, several cases of, of, a month free.
Was that, uh, did you play? He worked at the place?
Yeah, he's, uh, in here there at Miller Coors, and all this.
Okay.
And every month, they all get, uh, quite a few cases of beer, so, you know, um.
He give him free beer.
He, he brings quite, quite a bit down. And I tell you something, if that's the quality, this is the proof. They've got an area marked for, uh, alcohol consumption. You know, alcohol consumption here, or whatever.
Or, uh, refining, and when you got off work, you could drink all the beer you can.
Make it, make it.
Instead of having water keg, they had water kegs, called the pot, and then they had beer, beer. And they had, when you left work, you had beer, sleep everywhere.
And you could go get a rug, you could sit.
And if you worked over, if you worked over, six o'clock, past six o'clock, they had beer and coffee, and, uh, water there for you to drink. And they just, they put that, they had two boys, that was the common day, you, the people did that, they just needed to give it on.
Now, I think what we need to do, just looking over some emails, is we need to make that, if the board accepts the application today. We submit it to the property appraiser's office, they report the fiscal impact back to the board, and then the board would accept or deny the final, the final application. So, I would hope that maybe by the February nineteenth meeting, we could put the application back on the agenda. So it goes from the property appraiser to the T C D A.
Uh, T C D A.
Well, the T C D A does the free screen, does bring it to us.
Uh-huh.
Then we send it to the property appraiser, then it comes back to us.
Comes back to us, okay. Now, we take, I mean, but, but we have to give, ask people, uh, um, definitive answer to that, that kind of thing.
Well, has there, has the page that's already ancient property appraiser, has been through that page yet?
Well, it really needs to come from the board to the property appraiser office.
So what we're looking at today is just the acceptance of the application, because the protocol doesn't allow us to go in first until we have the okay.
The property appraiser's report.
We've done it through the property appraisal.
That's what the ordinance.
So my understanding is that we're just gonna accept and grant application today, right? According to, according to rules or something.
We need to come up with something, man.
We didn't, uh, we didn't.
Right, we got three.
I'm saying, the law, the man, we gotta let them roll.
Ask him to come up to you, or whatever, I know you talked to him, but we need to urge him to go there and, and do something.
It looks like that, uh, on the, there's like a tax exemption thing here, and the parking lot, that's the property appraiser's, appraiser's duty only. And God, he got six things here, he's got the answer.
Right, that's the E R, what, whatever is it?
Four eighteen.
E R four.
So we're gonna write letters for the county for the current fiscal year, from the absorbance tax source, revenue loss to the county. For exemptions previously granted, estimate revenues we lost to the county during third fiscal year if the exemption applies or granted. And then estimate the type of value lost to the county if the exemption was granted, improvement to real property and personal profit.
So, that line, I'm not sure who gave us these numbers, but, I don't. Ray Curtis ordered this, uh.
You know, it's just amazing to me that this, with this, this month, incident from years, isn't it, it's been taken by the land. And we still, um, still don't really define the concept.
It was easier when you thought it's one of you.
I mean, I'm not blaming, I'm not calling this either, I'm just, you know, it's all of us, I guess. But that we're here, it's one, one bit of proof and time for the company that, that really kind of does the effort, and we're still learning the concept. But we're, we're getting it, but, but once we pass today, I think we're all a lot clearer.
I think so, too. There's a whole application, that's a copy of the number that, that they filled out, under that, right there. That application says what all they did, and what, I mean, y'all.
Yeah, that's on the agenda, um.
Well, the next.
It's got all the dates on it, and, and, uh, talking about thirty thousand years, y'all, thirty thousand years.
I'm sure if we lay out what we talked about, what we feel like we can do. But we have to follow the procedures, getting property appraiser to do what he needs to do. I'm sure Ray Curtis will help us out, and, and get something put out, all that. Tell them what we're gonna present.
I think so.
Cause they got a lot of answers today.
Yeah, that's right.
Cause we call them off, we must have done.
I think we need to count on that for it, to fill them out, because.
Yeah, yeah.
With.
And we need to get all the information, as soon as we get all the paperwork in order that, that's required, uh, that, that, it, it should go. And you gonna read the part from the ordinance, which indicates that at the end of each year, January the third first, you're gonna bring us some, some data. And that we're approved of this for ten years, we're allowed it, that you do what you're supposed to do. Three hundred jobs. And if, if January third first next year, if you come in with a report and it doesn't have the hundred jobs, then the board will make a decision about what, what to do then. And, and that'll be my last, that'll be my last time, next January third first. Following January third first, I won't be here.
You're gonna change your mind.
Well, I, I attempted to change my mind, cause it's feeling good, but my family wants me to get out of this. But once you say you're not gonna run, change your mind, that's the way it is. But I don't know, I love it, they don't want me to run.
My family wants, they think it helps you, can you be and do it, and keep it go active, or?
Well, that's what I think. If I didn't have this, then Jim, I'd, I would have nothing to do. I'd be like four stage fash, nothing to do.
They got your picture, huh?
Yeah.
So.
How's yours? I can always tell a question, change your mind, and then people have a reaction, I guess. They might say, too late.
Now, let's look on this ordinance script here, it says, new businesses, which tell me, a business establishing ten or more quality jobs.
Uh-huh.
Okay. This doesn't say establishing ten new employees, and it doesn't say full-time employees. This is how they, the way, we, we think.
There's another place that sounds full-time, might not be here. Here is, is business establishing twenty-five or more quality jobs to instruct, for twenty-five or more full-time.
But on the ten, if they on the ten, it doesn't say that, does it?
Uh, a new business, a, a new business is gonna have A in, and B in, and C. A new business is defined as a business establishing ten or more quality jobs. To instruct ten or more full-time employees, which blah, blah, blah. Or, a new business is a business establishing twenty-five or more.
That's what they said, so.
Now, if you're gonna do, this is for ten, this is for twenty-five or more, which is, what, what's up for this?
You're going.
It's sounding like a lawyer with that.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's, it's. Yeah, it's a lawyer, that's it.
And that looks like a, a, that, that looks like a type of old five.
Yes, you're gonna get a lawyer in there for that thing.
So I don't know what to say today, Ken. Well, I mean, you can hear about the property appraiser, I just, I, I think, they obviously.
Going down to the ground.
I just don't know what to say.
Looks like a five, a six five.
I can't talk about something I don't know from.
Would it be a picture of, like, any home, or?
I mean, I mean, you do the talking, then.
Well, uh, along with you going out to try and test the lead in this, in, what, what can it do?
I mean, it's also, this is a conversation very hard, you know.
Very hard, I'm done.
It's a ten or more, then it's a twenty-five or more time. And this is not what I wanted to say. I want one paragraph that says, ten or more new employees, then four times, right?
That's, that's what I thought, that's what I.
It's a little like, that's a whole concept on there, maybe a little like.
Right. Well, yeah, there's a good part, that's what I just said about extension, but, again, it's A and B, one says ten, and the other says twenty-five.
Five, oh, and, and use new five, red five, but.
Now, this is.
All they put on there for that.
Yeah, well, the, on the second page, and on the third page.
It might have leaked, and you shut the door, shut it, it was old.
Uh-huh, but we were.
These people are expanding an existing business.
What they're.
Now, they actually come under that A part, don't you think?
Yeah.
And this is establishing ten or more quality jobs, people, ten or more full-time employees in Taylor County.
That was, that was, that was.
According to this deposition, so an existing business, Puff is an A. Cause they got the ten or more jobs.
But now, B is twenty-five or more, and they're saying.
They got that.
Well, and, and B is says that.
Back with the general, then they got the F.
And so they would expect.
They got a big, they got a big.
About the bad, the old tax exemption, is less than forty-five, seventy-five percent, for each year. I understand that.
Right, and then have the, the meter.
Four five oh for what?
They change the meter.
That's, if you want five oh, same thing, fifty percent.
They, they probably gonna put a meter on that, I think.
The more jobs you bring in, the less percentage you get, I don't screw that.
I would love for him to, he's funny, he's, he feels like the numbers that we, and I actually. Come back. Let me take my pocket with me. All right, I'm not gonna hold your pocket.
Now, thanks, thanks to the corporate team, all this thing, to find the.
So I have.
Tell us what we're doing. I'm curious.
Now, that's not good.
No, no.
We have an ordinance like that coming away from the county.
No. Um.
We're talking about, um, the, uh, food snack.
The food, uh, um.
The whatever they call it.
Food box.
Food box, okay. I got it all wrong.
Mm-hmm. And the actual process is you guys will accept the application. You, you accept the application and then there's some data on that application. And in this particular case, that data was incorrect and we've got to correct data for you to look at. They use the whole mileage instead of the mileage totally because of the government far left.
On their application, we're nearly set up with wrong. Okay, okay. Well, hey, we know, we do require a grant.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I want to ask today, well, what was wrong with that?
It was the total mileage rate. The total mileage rate for the city. They had twenty of river, the city, the county, the state.
Yeah, yeah.
So the numbers were, the, the, yeah, the numbers were actually non-physical numbers. And, uh, the number on the front list document, two point six million, all that, again, and all that, every month. Cause they used the old, and they used the whole, they used the whole mileage. See, we see the tax bill as condemnation of the.
They used the whole tax bill.
You guys just think of it as your taxing authority bill and, and as you should. But the bill itself is everything. It's school, state, school, local, government, the district, MSP, you, everything. There you go. I know where you did it. So that turns in the, the numbers, I didn't write it copy spread.
I did, I made it copy.
Oh, you didn't make a copy spread of it?
So I put numbers on top, one says fifty thousand and one says twenty million.
Mm-hmm.
So the handout.
That was a fifty million, that's twenty million.
Fifty dollars.
So, so this is a twenty million dollar project. And so there's a second page here, right? The numbers. Starts, it starts out at eight two million and a half.
Yeah, good.
And the county portion of that bill, if we would be ready to ditch before, if we were to do a hundred and six, would be a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
That's correct, right here. That's correct, yeah.
All right, that's the second page. And.
And you do fifty percent.
And then it's fifty percent.
It's fifty dollars.
You got two different ones. I don't think you have.
So I.
Can you, uh, the total of the county portion of the bill? Let's see how much less than two point six million it is.
It's nine hundred and thirty dollars.
And how much?
Nine, it's right down on the bottom of your sheet there. Nine hundred and thirty dollars.
It looks around.
It ain't on there. You may not have one eye.
It's nine hundred and thirty.
What I got, darn it.
Nine hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. Nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Eight hundred and what?
Eight hundred and four.
If you wanna make, you just make copies.
And once again, all depreciation, your, your.
They're taking.
And any of the estimates that they have, we're taking a twelve year life on this equipment. Now, some of this equipment's going to be baking equipment that has a twelve year life. Some of this equipment might be computers and might be other items that have a much shorter life or a much longer life. But until we get returns where we can actually take the specifics of it, just like the mill, I mean, when, when, when we do the mill, which we're doing right now, and have been doing several months, we have just the, the submission of the equipment and what it is. And then we go to tables and we break this down and we depreciate economically speaking. So you're doing a really broad, generic, uh, assumption. But once we get down to the nuts and bulk of the community. Because then we're by the port. And, you know, their construction's moving there, you know, and they, they don't know what the community right now. You know, it's all based on, we're assuming the majority of equipment is going to have closure. So that's the numbers you're giving right now.
Best, best, right now, but that's.
Well, now, now, let me ask you a question. Like, if they order that equipment and they get it in here, like, what was it about July?
May.
By May of this year. Then, does that give you enough time to get it added to the tax flow?
Yes, I guess the intention wouldn't actually start until the following year.
That's correct.
We're a year behind on that.
In twenty twenty-one.
This is nineteen.
So they're saying it's going to get here when?
May.
May.
This year?
Yeah, and they've already listed and, and the tax bill is supposed to get to you in November. Yeah, it won't be on that one, it'll be on the next.
Uh-huh.
So that will be the tax bill that comes out in November of twenty. November of twenty, that's where they will get the credit.
Cause previous credit, tax credit has just dropped off. So they all have to have one for this upcoming nineteen tax.
Now, it turns out, they already ordered our. Oh, I got it. Nope, I didn't mind.
So Bruce, one of the little men that worked in today. They, they wanted us to vote Monday night, which we could not do.
Right.
And now we sort of promised that we would be able to do it today, except maybe at three. But as we go through the steps of this process, um, you know, it's a TCDA, uh, takes the application and, and it's given to us. And then we accept it or not, then it goes to you.
Correct.
For, um, for verification.
Then you gotta get a.
And it goes back to the TCDA, it calls it as ordinance, and then to us. But whichever way that is, the problem is we're in a bind because these people are talking about we don't have the essence, of course. And they want an answer from us today, but yet we don't have a certification from you. So how can you help us out today?
Well, even if you do get certification, then another, you know, complete process, because you're going to have to draft, draft a resolution ordinance. And Congress will have to have that information for you to have that. And then, if I'm not mistaken, you're going to have to have another public hearing, uh, to, for this to be, so. I wonder if there's anything you're going to do today that's going to simplify this being.
Correct.
Well, I mean, if all you can do is give them your.
Our intent.
And your.
Our intent, this is what we're intending to do when we get all this.
Correct. We'd also have to notify them at what stage that their application is clarified, because they're gonna probably wonder where we are, what timeframe we're.
Well, and we had a sidebar conversation about that and I told them I don't know, but I would think at the minimum, at least a month, while we go through the process. And that may not be, I mean, may not, that might not be completely accurate, because I couldn't remember if we needed one or two public hearings. Well, what I'm thinking though, is that if we could have the third part of this done, which is Bruce today, then, then, you know, the only thing left is to get the ordinance in place and the public hearings and all that. Which, in my mind, and I'm thinking that that probably won't be a problem. I mean, if the five of us have already agreed to be system, but then we.
Bear from the system.
We bear from the system, that's hard to explain.
But do they have a vote ramp? And you could say, well, y'all don't wanna have a vote ramp and people can go put in spring warriors today.
Yeah, I think that needs to be part of the criteria and that there's a logical reason for pushing them up to the top.
I think so.
And I don't. Well, I thought y'all saying that with spring warriors, you were going to look at the hospital, you know, heart transplant, to help with that facility. Which means we would need.
He would need to save in your priority, first thing, so we would not do a big, no, he said.
Go ahead.
Okay, that works for me.
What, what needs to be done in spring warriors?
Huh?
What needs to be done in spring warriors?
Nothing. You go there and put in the.
Well, you need to expand more parking.
Yeah, you could, you could fill in more parking there. Two acres, you clear up.
That's all I see, park, that's all I see that.
It's already one of the old ramps there.
There's a ramp, there's a ramp there. That, that's a big one.
No, there's another old ramp right at the end of the road, working right, King's Pit Camp.
Right, but there's cable problem.
Yeah, take the cable down and then you can probably do it one more time.
Spring ramp don't belong to the pit camp, it belongs to Fred Moore. When you come in the road where the little circle is.
Right.
There is one that's got cable.
Well, it's got a ramp on its side.
And then the, what I thought you referred to was the concrete.
That's the one Fred owned.
I, I asked you to talk to those people to tell them what I was doing.
They won't act like, they don't, they split the money with Fred on it because they, they keep up the cable and all that kind of stuff. Fred, I'm, those both are ramps.
Okay, and we're not reading any. Or we'd say that we would pursue spring warriors with firdex, we'd be out of this equation. And I worry about a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, uh, feasibility study and let's preclude the two that's recommended. So what I can do is I can instruct our direct directors to be working part-time specifically for this, this project, you know, and other ones, to work on grant applications for feasibility studies for Hagan Cove and, well, female, we're still not calling it.
And we're.
And touching the dirt. Can we submit applications for all three?
I, I would say that if, if we're really, and that's why I started this place, if our focus is to put in a facility. Hagan.
A facility.
Yeah.
It's not.
Then of the two properties that are available between Hagan's Cove and Dollar's Creek, Hagan's Cove is much more obvious choice.
Yeah.
I see.
If we want to.
It's not very far out of the canyon area.
And if we want to look beyond that restricted access through the creek line, then a peasant property is the next logical choice to, to allow for a regional tax facility.
You're gonna fix the nature.
Sure.
And now, pretty sorry, I didn't first ask you the little vote ramp.
It doesn't, like I said, I have spent hours out there waiting for the water to.
All right, we got a plan.
So, then, could we'll bring a grant application back to the board or whatever we have to do for those two properties? We have an end of March deadline to submit those to the goal consortium and then we'll see how it takes out. And my suggestion would be, if we're not, if we don't like the results of, of those two, then we'll go to the next on the list.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna hookbar it out on the list, Tom?
No, it's, it's just logistically, it, it, it would be tough for maneuvering, um, on that, on that piece of.
Of what?
It'd be tough for maneuvering, pulling in, launching, parking, retrieving, it's a very small peninsula.
Oh, yeah, I've been there, looked at it like it, it is small, but then again, a lot of people use it too.
No, no doubt, I know people that do, and, uh.
Now, please, we have plenty of time, this is just the first step. We know we're going to have to submit individual grant applications for every project. So if this is the way you want to define our, our marketing orders, then we can start at the top of the list. And, but we can't, we don't need to take action immediately after we receive a feasibility study necessarily. Then at that point, then it would be property appraisal. And then after those two milestones, then we can look at whether or not we need to add an amendment to the FCP. Or if you want to move forward with construction or acquisition or whatever the locals would like to do. That's funny, and that follow-up, right? And you're gonna, you're gonna see then, if, if we can use, say, for instance, if it's Hagan's Cove and that worked out, then you're gonna, uh, work on seeing if we can get the acquisition money to go for construction.
Now, that's what, that leads into my question. It, it's probably fifteen million dollars.
Twelve point six.
Twelve point six. And dribble in over eighteen year period.
Next, it's, uh, thirteen forty, it's on the.
But anyway, point is, point is, you could very easily consume all that money on one big nice facility, the dress.
You can't.
You can't. I mean, so I think that we'd be smart to go back to Hagan's Cove, one big cross.
Right.
I had a hundred percent myself, because that, that, that's your, that's you kind of years ago.
Years ago. And I'm already envisioning that, you know, he's a two lane ramp, being happy with a three lane ramp. This one, I'm.
Would be a five.
Four.
Four lane ramp. Now, I've seen a three acre toilet can turn around.
I'm looking at people that are, that are traveling out there on the Gulf. About seven years ago, when I worked at the Marina, we had some people in Spain that wanted to come in here. And we had a sixty foot dock and they wanted to come in here, traveling around the world. Now, they didn't speak in English, but they were over the radio and I had to grab the radio and I spoke to them, to the guys, and I had, they were asking me how to get in here and what type of water draw. So I asked them what type of depth it is to get in here, and he said, wanting four foot water draw. Well, how tall is your field? He said, well, I don't want the nineteen foot field. I think, oh, geez, look, I'm sure you're not gonna get in here. You're gonna get in, you're gonna get in, but you'll never leave.
Good advice, good job.
So I just told them, you know, you stay out there thirty miles and we all, well, where y'all are heading from here? Well, we wanted to stay here for a week and see what's about. Because they're talking about ten, eighty feet all the way in pain and forty.
And you got to see how you can do that stuff, but.
I doubt.
I doubt.
I doubt, but.
Well, now, I know a funny kid who's coming and says, yeah, they're using anger out there past the burghers. Because they, they go home. And they ask, take a smaller boat and get on it.
Why, why, the only something of that magnitude where you're helping is one, two, the three, or four of those. And we put in a type of channel where we have a coast guard station, S W P, to hatch it. So when you have this international money that's traveling right behind us, you've got insurance right behind it, God knows what they would invest in here. So if we can facilitate that type of asset here, where people are circumcavaging us from, by waterways, we had another guy that was doing a documentary for, uh, Discovery Channel. Who was in a kayak, all the way from Seattle, Washington, kayaking all the way around South America, come up in the Gulf and stop at one beach. I like that, to be able to facilitate the matter of, it didn't happen, it didn't just for twenty-four years. We want to bring in people that are out there on the Gulf and want to facilitate, so it's in front of us, because nobody's gonna pay money here, why not?
Yes, I, um, I was at the beach doing some painting and, uh, when I got ready to go, I went down to Hodges Park because the neighbor had said that, that I see this homeless looking person out on the bridge that had, that looked very homeless and they didn't recognize him, so, and they were headed to Hodges Park. So I thought, well, I'll just ride down here and see if I see this person, and I didn't. But as I made that travel back there, there was a camper back there from British Columbia. And then there was another car from out of state. I couldn't see the state, but I knew it was on blood tag.
There is, there is a couple that actually load their, uh, they've got a big Mercedes type truck, looks like a military truck, and they're from Germany. They come down here once a year, all the way to Germany. They load the truck up, get on the boat, ship it over here, and then they drive from Jacksonville to Los Angeles. And do that I can trip them out a few years. And a lot of the year, these German boats, they can't down in there. So we're becoming an international destination, slowly, but surely, we are. We definitely are.
I had runners all the way from New York coming down here, everyone from St. Peter's Beach.
Oh, we've got, on the beach, I've been German.
All over country.
South African. Portugal. There's all kinds of different people coming in here.
There's a lot of people come to this country and then they run a vehicle and they go all around coast line, all the way around the country.
Oh, yeah.
Looking to coast line and then go back where they come from.
Well, I was, I was ready, uh, Commissioner Bruce, would you like to say, Bruce?
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you for the food, the bottles, the, the nourishment, that's about all you provide.
All right, I'm set. Uh, very good meeting so far, men.
Oh, yeah.
Very productive.
I like that four or five boat ramps here too. I have, I have a Timmy, the Timmy got them.
Uh-huh.
Oh, good, it was a lead bottle. They, they, a sixty foot boat in.
Yeah, yeah, we did, we got, we got them all five. But I always check.
I'll sleep all night and I know they're late.
Yeah.
And what's the other symbol for better?
Yeah, I'll get married. It wasn't important, we're digging, it's a state of somebody that's like.
Yeah, that's right.
And we're all working.
Talking about that counter and the other.
Hmm. We are.
Uh, I feel like, name, I didn't.
Well, uh, thank you. And once you thank you.
It's sort of a, uh, like a, like a, yeah.
At least we're doing the time, so.
Yeah. How you doing for that? I had knees hurting last week, I'm a little sore right now, but I'm getting better all the time.
What they do, replace.
They have a, they trim a car, you know, like, over the years, twist it, get it hurt, and it's just time to, you know. I'm running rough on this, this year. I'm a couple of years, I don't know, but talking about a young dog lost now.
Yeah.
You know, I quit that.
Yeah, I, I have taken.
I keep, I'm talking, it's very running. I, I, I said that, I'm on one now. I'm tired a lot, but I'm finding that. Too loud, I'm on dog walking, but, hey, it's a girl. I got up, I'm not moving, because I got, that's been pretty good, man. Okay, I like it.
What do you think happened?
Yeah, I had to, I had to get up, I was walking, I had to get up, walk around him, but. Thank. Finally, I held it. For a minute, too. Some of them, Fox News or whatever's happening. And throw them, follow messages, check the gear, and if I can get it out of the powder up in fifteen minutes. And I'll lay there and get ready for my dinner. And then we'll, uh, have a bite, eat about dark and watch it. At our house, after Channel Six's over, it's Jeffrey and we're, we're walking to Jeff. And then after that, Maggie has her turn, she watches. And say, Dr. Poe, Law Order. Both these old, uh, people renovate their little houses and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, they would keep it true, watch it an hour, two days, and I'm like, I quit back to watch the little news. My wife watches it instead of when I come home and she has a lift. What we need to do to the house? Yeah. Man, they renovate, still their little houses.
I just want them to watch, well, you know, the, the children go to bed at, at eight thirty. Um, but I mean, I'm real strict about that. And last night, the children went to bed at eight thirty, and I had just got to washing all those dishes and cooking and we went to bed at eight. Everybody went to bed at eight thirty last night.
Anne was in there by seven thirty.
I was.
About eight thirty, Arizona.
She was worn out and I was like, dust that child in bed, crying, stop crying. I was wrong, she gets tired, you know, girls? They get tired and they start crying. And it's just drama, and I'm like, I'm done. Let her in bed for that. And she was sleeping five minutes. I'm glad you got girls. I had two girls, oh, we were. Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry, that, that she's been having trauma at my house. Let, let, we owe you for the cheap for now. Oh, I think, my daughter's a piece of fun. Bow. I forgot about that. Think about other things.
Yeah, I got it.
Get some time to go. I gotta get some time back.
Here, I can tie one.
Please, can you give me the time more?
I need a.
I'll take it. How much do you drink to that, very disgusting?
A dollar.
A dollar fifty?
Y'all been doing. He goes to town, asks him to Walmart, I, I was there the other day, checking on some eyebrows, walked out there, there's a lobby, not a thirty. There's a fifty cent coat, and in the lobby of Walmart, town ass, on my back. I thought, man, I'll go to town, ask him, get me a.
My brother didn't drive a cab to get a haircut and fix his hair. With his nose up there, you remember him? His little barbershop. Do you tend to hear those noise up there? I mean, you might know who I'm talking about.
But I do. And, but, you know, we have to have something from you, for me, for I can even say nothing much.
Sure, sure do that. Uh, but the deal is, I think that we need to, uh, express the truth about this. Regardless, none of this is going to affect current tax bill coming up in two thousand and nineteen.
Right.
They're going to get their equipment, they're going to get the use of that equipment.
Far behind their.
Far over half a year at no tax rate.
That's right.
So, you know, if it's twenty million dollars, you know, you're, you're taking this number here, they're getting a whole hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars free the first year.
That's right.
Okay, so we share that back and the urgency on their part, I can imagine that a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar credit is going to cause me to not order twenty million dollars. What?
It's.
I, I mean, I got bigger fish fried. If I'm ordering twenty million dollars, what's worried about a hundred and thirty-six thousand?
Yeah, it's on the way up.
Well, that's what they're concerned is, are they going, from what I understand, is the equipment coming here or going to another location? Based upon, based, and what we say to them.
And I don't have a gun to our word and what we say, and they're gonna give it some time. And, and, and I'm thinking in terms of the chair here. Our motion today should be to obstruct this path and our attorney to draft the ordinance and work with the property president, the property certificate. And our instructions, our turning is here will be that we will do this percentage for this many years. That ought to give them enough information to come.
Right, Bruce?
That is too short. That gives back.
That, that, that's expressed here in the end.
We've expressed our intent as a public body, that's what we're gonna do, and we're gonna do it as fast as we can get it done. And you need to understand that if you sit around and explain, it's, it's, it's won't hit the tax flow until it's following year.
That's right.
Until you got, you bring your equipment all in there, folks, it's free, get your, hey, come on in.
Come on in.
Bring it all in. We're gonna give you a whole free.
I don't think we can do anything else, other, other.
We're not gonna give them.
Be a better statutory, they. They probably knew that, they just wanted it in line, or they wasn't getting those surprises at the end of the year.
But we can do that.
Yeah.
But I explained, it has to go through the public hearing process. So my answer the other day was, uh, we can't admit the instinct until we go through the process, have the public hearing, and the ordinance is actually enacted. And what did they say when you said that, well, what was that, which locations it's listed to, if they say okay? Oh, they really didn't.
Well, I mean, you, you can give them everything that you can, that's what they can ask for, they can choose, choose, go elsewhere. For other reasons.
Yeah, because that's another thing, you, the county is doing this, they gotta go to the city, it won't cut on water, it won't cut on gas.
So there are other factors that will affect.
Then you run up on the. Environmentally.
They want to make any promises that we did not meet.
Or you don't want to be sick, for me.
I don't think we can give them no promise, they couldn't keep the full tax base, so, I mean, there's no, there's no point, we could give them the tax if they, you know, if they come, they will give them breaks. Just.
In my, in my, and then that'll all be up to, I'll do some just an agreement until I ask them to get the return. And when I get the return, I got the equipment in my hand, hey, it is what it is. Good, bad, and different, uh, we're not going very, and that's nothing that, that, that'll all be on my shoulders. At that point. And, and you guys just, you just tell me what you, what percentage you want me to give them. And, and then when it gets the physically that equipped, then we'll, we'll handle that part.
Okay.
And, and, uh, and I gave you some breakdowns of, um, a fifty percent. We actually showed how long that fifty percent would take to get to the same amount of money that the ten year, uh, hundred percent would do. So in ten years at a hundred percent, that's the first page, it's a total of nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. At a fifty percent, which is the second page. You'll calculate that thirty days. This, this, uh, this, this. And, um. It takes you thirty-five years to get to the same deal, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, that was fast, uh, saying one.
Ten year deal.
Okay. And, well, that's all your last.
Yeah.
That's, I would say that's all your last, and that's all your last ten years, so I was just showing you how, how. Uh, on a seventy-five percent deal, you know, once again, it's going to do, the same ten year numbers are comparable. Uh, as they run the totals, uh, on the ten year part. So, uh, you can do a fifty percent, seventy-five percent, a hundred percent, and, um, the number I hear, uh, is a seventy-five. Now, that's what we did for somebody else, was have them come. Have you heard any numbers on the street on this deal?
I don't know.
I think seventy-five percent would be, uh, a great number.
You think that would be a great number, you need to throw down, seventy-five percent.
You think that? Would that put us in a competitive position, in your opinion? Somebody else could go for eighty?
I think it would. I think there's been a few deaths in the nation, they've, uh, some pointed it down, and, uh, yeah, anything's precious, but I think seventy-five would be precious, uh.
We know there is an impact to our community, you know, uh, with, with the, with this, I mean.
Oh, I think, I, I agree with you.
Infrastructure, you know, so there is an impact.
Even that, huh? I mean, um, these guys are going to work a lot, too.
Well, if I was seeing them, I'd ask for a hundred percent for ten years, or forever, if I could. But we just don't know if they really, if they're bluffing or not, in terms of, well, we're waiting to order this equipment because we don't know where to, where to send it. To here or to our other location.
We're the tax bill board.
Huh?
I did the tax, yeah. On their part.
Well, yeah, they're, they're, they're playing poker with them.
Sure.
They got such a good deal on the building, that they, I don't think they're gonna do it, they just can't believe the wood. You know?
It's my. Give us that, though.
It, uh, I don't want, it's a lot of finger pulling, it's that old county commission down there.
I'm gonna buy it on wood. It's not buying on wood, that's not, okay?
Uh.
We'll, 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 uh. About three o'clock, we'll come over.
Well, it's kind of one o'clock now, please, huh?
One.
So, for instance, my understanding of the process is, if the board's supposed to accept the application today, and they, and they voice their intent.
Correct.
Then I can send that to you.
Correct.
Tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
And, but then, we would have to wait until the next board meeting to accept the application and to review, and to approve the draft ordinance and the advertisement.
Okay.
And then it would be, I don't know, maybe the board meeting after that, for the public hearing.
What about the board meeting, so, it's three o'clock, I mean, what, can't speed it up?
I'll try to, you'll have to do third time.
Well, yeah, I don't think we, there's, uh, really important, the business cleanest scheme done, I think the employees can be attentive to board.
Right.
And I, I don't think the importance is the fact of the procedures complete. Uh, because, once again, this tax year is not gonna, my, I try to.
You gotta hope that you're.
If they're putting this here tomorrow, they'll know what our intent is. Hey, they're free anyway.
That's right.
So, you know, whether we speed this up or don't speed it up, really have no impact, uh, it's just an incentive board. And what do you, what do you guys say, hey, this is what we're gonna do, you know, the rest of us can get it handled.
I'm more prepared that they get, they get to work, making money off of it, that it's been, nobody's had it.
Well.
They're gonna be.
My, my, bring it on, bring it on.
Get the cookies.
Um.
You know, it's five hour already.
Well, what they expressed to me was not getting the equipment here, they need a commitment so they can order the equipment and decide where it's going to go. Because a delay of a week, from what I understand, could delay installation in six months because of the finding the equipment, they'll explain all that at three, so, I don't think, I think the, the concern is, they need a commitment so they can order the equipment.
What you give them that?
We give them all commitment.
Okay, so, what, what do we want to do then, I know we earlier had said a hundred percent based on each annual report for ten years, what, what, what are we thinking now? I know we've drawn out seventy-five, so.
I'm, I'm still at a hundred.
And the numbers are smaller now than they were earlier today.
Because the numbers are smaller.
They were earlier today, so.
I, I'm at a hundred, and that, that keeps this board from being criticized, and I've been far economically, I've been a team player. The key to this whole thing is, is how to go to the process. And it, on January the thirty-first, you gotta come in here with some documentation about how many jobs. And when Conrad drafts the ordinance, we're gonna make sure the language is in here specifically, what you've got to bring to this board.
Well, it's also, it's right, it's already in the ordinance, but then there is, for each individual, for each new ordinance that is enacted towards the business, that is something that's mentioned. By January thirty-first, you have to submit your, your report.
Now, there'll be a separate ordinance just for pups.
Yes, yes.
And is that separate ordinance just for pups?
It was.
For my comfort, I ordered to spell out, the county that will take place on January the thirty-first.
Okay.
And this is what we're gonna expect.
Right.
An archer or, uh, whatever, but it's gonna be something that's believable. That will define and state how many jobs you've created, and at the end of that first year, if you promise you're gonna bring in a hundred jobs, and you didn't bring in but fifty, then at that point in time, you're out of compliance.
Right.
And then the board that's here at that time and decides what to do, we'll cut the hundred percent back to a certain other percentage, or we'll say you're in violation of this thing, and the whole deal is off the table, or whatever.
Now, within the ordinance.
I don't think you're gonna go next.
Well, within the.
That's telling you what it is. You just tell away everybody, it's gonna put, put, it's, but tax will range, you said, now, you all understand, you're gonna have to commit to a report. And what you like to say, Tom, you're gonna have to tell them, that's the best we scare them off, we're talking books ourselves.
Now, within the ordinance, let me read this, it says, if an exemption is revoked, the commission may recover any ad lib loan taxes previously suspended by this article. In addition, the county shall have the right to recover any and all costs and damages, including reasonable attorneys, incurred in recovering ad lib loan taxes from the applicant.
Well, that has to be very.
It's spelled out in the ordinance.
So, so we can't ask, we're about to pay.
Legal.
What's that?
Back to them, back to them.
I don't know, I was thinking.
Accept it all, we're, we're gonna deal with it, it's all pup.
The option is there.
Well, that's.
There's a fine option.
That's within the ordinance, now, and what happens is a new ordinance for each candidate is adopted, but that, but that's within our, um, ad lib tax exempt ordinance.
Okay. Ruth, you gotta go, uh, you know, you was pretty hot for a while ago. Uh, yeah, I, I, if you don't mind, on another subject, Londa and I have been working on, um, your fire assessment, uh, process that you've been working on, um. You're, they're gonna hear my first report back to Londa on this, uh, on the MSPUs, our current, uh, facilities of payment. Thirty percent of the MSPU is paid by, that's right, okay? Ten percent is for gas, diesel, fifty percent for rivers, I don't give you that, there's four, uh, and, um, which amounts up to, um. Forty-nine percent of it, you know, if you go back, and you've heard all my numbers, I always say, uh, tangible versus real property that are taxable, uh, forty-nine percent, uh, is going to be commercial, residential, everybody else other than the top taxpayers. So, in the event you were to go to an assessment, and you step away from the MSPU, you're going to get a huge, like, half of it back to, which is, uh, to larger accounts. And you're going to take it and spread it out amongst, uh, residents, and the base, is what's going to happen, uh, if you go to a pure fire settlement. Right now, half of our MSPUs is being paid, um, by a very small portion of the tax, uh, I think one, two, three, four, uh, six accounts are paying half of the MSPUs today, so.
And then if, if we did something like that, and then however many people came over and said, I can't afford it, I can't afford it. Huh?
Yeah, they don't pay.
That's right. We'd have dropped this, huh?
Well, it, and, and I'm, I'm assuming you're our first, and I've got, uh, Londa and I's agreement, that is, I was gonna give her, this firm ground information, then her and I are gonna, you know, add some more to it, and go, go back and, and, you know. For a bit of, I'm trying to give you a solution, I'm giving you the, I'm giving you the problem right now, but we're working on solutions for it. So, we wanna give you some ideas that you guys can, can bounce around, and, and we might have some solutions, and that's the other part of this. And, and, so, we've got some ideas on some, we showed what would happen with an MSPU without an MSPU, is what I just told you. No MSPU, we just show what it's at. That ain't on rock, that would be, yeah, that would be very good. So, we're, we're playing with some ideas of moving MSPU, uh, plus, how?
Which, which is something that would play out and stay.
Correct, yeah, uh.
Possible.
The only thing the study didn't understand is the, the makeup of our role. The study didn't, didn't understand the type of role, it's about people. Okay? So, or five accounts, so, I think we can now take the MSPU plus, and I'm showing you some percentages of what that's gonna do to a house that's twenty-five thousand, a house that's fifty thousand, a house that's a hundred thousand, a house that's two hundred thousand, if you don't have a lot. So, what, what, what's gonna actually happen to the tax bill is on a house, this is MSPU plus, on the set. And, um, a twenty-five thousand dollar house is paying zero.
Mm-hmm.
Today.
Right.
So, with an additional ninety-two dollars as an assessment, that'll give you, and, and what I need is your money grab, I need to know how much money you want to grab, um, 'cause I understand we're trying to get the fire, some additional money.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I don't know what that number is, and that's what we're gonna share, um, and then once you do a fifty thousand, and your current MSPU contribution is twenty-nine dollars, and then we add the ninety-two to it, that gives them a one-twenty-one bill. Not a bill, but an increase.
Mm.
Uh, the in, the increase that could be ninety-two dollars.
For how?
Mm-hmm. On a house that's fifty thousand, and then a house that's a hundred thousand, it's only a hundred fifty dollars. Because the contribution to MSPU is much larger already, you know, the hundred thousand dollar guy has contributed fifty-eight dollars to MSPU, and the twenty-five thousand dollar guy has contributed nothing. Okay? So, we're taking that plus the amount two gives us, and then what those bills will look like. So, at the end of the day, once, I understand how much money you guys might be considering for a fire, we'll give you a, an assessment plus MSPU to get you to that fire number as an option. Is that how about the war changes? Is that, is that where you want?
That's what I'm thinking, uh, may I explain this? Uh, to go strictly to an MSPU for fires, we can't do it. We can't do it, we can't transfer all of that from these five big taxpayers to all the houses in this county, it just won't work. The purpose of going and looking at this back, though, is because we need more money in the fire department, but you don't have to pay to get, you can do a fire assessment, or you can increase the MSPU on everybody, see? All right, you've got a lot of houses, folks that don't pay any, they, they need to pay a little bit. I'd like to keep the MSPU at that, keep that money, and then Londa and this board can give you a number, and we need an extra two hundred thousand in fire, and then run your numbers and add the fire assessment to what we already paid, which is opposite from what the clerk says you have to do, I did three deals. He says you're gonna generate a hundred thousand dollars on a, a fire settlement, you've got to decrease the MSPU by that same amount, and that's not where I'm going. I, I, I don't, I don't know that, now, I don't know that, it's just like statues, or that's like, I don't think that's just.
He said, otherwise it would be double taxing.
He said it'd be double taxing, but I, I don't see it that way, unless it's that.
I think he meant to reduce the MSPU.
If you're gonna reduce the MSPU by what you collect, then that's just wrong, 'cause you're passing, you're taking, and you're putting the tax burden, it's, it's a worry for us, not called, uh, it's where you tax the poor people more than the rich people. Follow me?
Mm.
So, it's gotta be a hybrid for me. And, okay.
Or, or, or.
I didn't know why you're bringing that up, because I kinda wanted to get a feel of what direction they wanted to go.
I think originally, the, the, um, the original request was that, um, fire be taken out of the MSPU, and the assessment number was a hundred seventy-seven dollars a year, is that not the number? And that would generate about a half million. Dollars or something like that.
If you come up with a hundred seventy-eight thousand, that means each house, this county's gonna be an increased tax bill of, you know, a hundred and two dollars. You remember when we did this one time before, and it came out, how many astronomical amount of money to have some poor people pay, gather them, you big guys are paying half of them.
Come, if, if you have the larger accounts, paying half of the amount, you know, we don't wanna do it, I would think, for, that, that, I don't think, that or fly, that's, we can, or we can, you can do the number for them. We're working on it, we're, yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll. Find a new, and then we'll, uh, I'll give Londa.
Don't worry about it, I'm just, I'm just.
Okay, Bruce, can you come back at three o'clock?
Can we take a little break?
Yeah. Sure, we're gonna take a break, now, I think we'll take a break, but, um, but, when this comes off, this is on our agenda, and I'm just gonna go through, you know, in general, the process. And then, I think I will call you to talk about their tax bill.
Mm-hmm.
And then.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about the fact that whatever happens this year is not going to, is not going to affect the tax bill.
Right, so that won't, that come to you, and, you know. And from there, uh, from there, um, Londa, you wanna, uh, talk, or you wanna talk, uh? Not necessarily, I think they just need to understand, um, the process. And I think that, you know, they'll want, they'll want some reinsurance from the board of the intent, and then we can, we can, I think.
We'll play it out here, we'll link that. You're gonna do the other side, and, um, and then it'll shorten ninety.
I'm cleaning the dead one, I get my dinner, it's not all right.
It's all dead.
If you ever hear that from our company.
Yeah, I'm like, what the hell?
The other way, you answer now.
I'm gonna move all my paperwork up here, right?
We'll just break your meals and get, get the thing up.
Before you leave, I'll, I'll see you at three o'clock.
Wait, now, we're not putting our end in, you need to be.
Well, I, I, I thought if we was gonna take an hour break, I gotta go get some gas, but, how long?
Well, I don't know, on our, on, on, on this, it's a long one.
Oh, well, I, I, I can go get my gas, actually.
I need to tell you, how many miles of gas?
I thought you'd take a bathroom.
And it's all fire moves.
I don't care about it, it's free.
Yeah, okay, very good.
No, I'm glad I was right.
And now, uh, uh. MSPU is all you want.
You wanna go on tax.
One more break.
No, I'm gonna stay up here. And there are.
You want me, one six? Who, who, who gets the, what else?
One eight.
We have eight and five.
Right, right. And, um.
This is robbery.
Robbery, so. What? You don't go to the end, do you? Where you go?
Two D and N.
Really?
You know what? You know what?
Yeah.
Well, that's not for far.
Well, what it is, you got two far.
What did you say?
Get our own.
Yeah.
This is shit that all won.
That, that, that's still a live project.
No, I do, it's like, fire out of this one, or let's fire out of this one.
The money, oh, that's profit.
So, I think we.
Might as well do a little fun, so, in the year, we can have a, a meal, say. You know, or if we had a flower, you know, if somebody.
You, you can't, I mean.
Most family members.
You can't fly.
You can't fly.
Now, that's very sad.
Looking here, right, with the venue.
With the nine thousand dollars we have now.
It wasn't just because of you.
You know, if you still pay, talk about it, we're fifty, you can do that.
And that's, that's written.
All these guys, what are you? Mr. Russell, what's that? Uh-huh. In all the works, you did forty-nine hours.
I didn't tell him what it really is.
Going over the seventy-seven. And then these guys go back down.
Yeah.
Where are they now?
All crushed up.
See, all the love, you know, all the love of them back, you know, they got anything now. Can I thank you, you ever heard of Mr. Sam?
Yeah, I've heard of him.
He's been set far, man, and just got his dad.
Yeah, 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 I think so.
Mr. Sam's brother.
Okay, okay.
And that's what, huh? Yeah, he was, yeah, we did.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, but a career, career, well, that's not a red.
Now, it's not a bad thing, though. Will it, you can't, there's. So, you're saying, I can't take it out?
This is saying, I'm going, or Mr. Do.
And that makes sense.
That's our what?
Number five.
Oh, well, you know, I, I, yeah, but a little fire, but we got to do it.
Well, let me tell you what.
Yeah, isn't that, you know, I'm seeing them.
But that's, that's the truth. It's in the brain, and you raise a military, and you let, and you let everybody, you let them basically, what's that? I don't know how you, I don't know how you do that, though.
So, I'm going to be back on you.
But that's good. That's enough of both, right?
That seems like a hard one.
It's got more, come on.
Get, get, what, you get it done, so have those people, now, you can't, say that. Hey, guys, we can't do, but, we can't do a, uh.
But that is not what.
MSTU and a, and.
You can't.
No, but.
But that's not what we asked you to, I swear, that was, they.
They were saying both.
They were saying both.
Okay, well, we, I mean, I, I did read that, it did say that.
It does say that.
And that's why I assumed we could.
I, I don't know if that can make.
Finally, I've got to figure out the little ten. If I'm not getting the ten, it's too good.
Maybe it comes from, um, okay, it's my job.
About that, something.
Yeah, that's them, really, if I was going there, what you're paying about.
You know, we're going to very close, we're going to very close, whatever. We didn't, we didn't get on the track, we didn't make it to the table. We didn't make it out. And we got to see, I, I thank y'all. Three and one.
Three and one.
Yes, sir.
Make it.
Three and one.
Three and one. Make it a lot easier to meet a call, that's the latest, that's the latest in heck, for it, there.
Yes.
First of all.
Yeah. Okay. Does y'all want to move ahead?
Let's go.
Uh, the next thing on my list is number five, economic development. Um, we came to discuss present model, multi-county partnerships, other options, and sort of tax debate that we've already done. Commissioner?
I'll, uh, explain to you why I, I think I put this down, because we talked, the boss was good. I had a conversation with Jim Bassett, who was years was chair of the county, I'm sorry. And we had our, about once a month, conversation out on sidewalk, the captain's bank, I put it right, he's a bee. And Jim said, you know, it might be appropriate to this, and, for this community, look at a different model for providing economic development service. And he mentioned it before when Fred was tired, that, uh, there was some discussion about, and Thomas knows more about this than sure than others, about a multi-county approach to economic development, where two, three counties, you know, put their resources. And he said, I don't know if it's pretty clear to look at that model again, or if even that model are available, but his bottom line was, it doesn't appear that the model we're, that we're working with is, is, is doing very well. Uh, and I got thinking about that. I really think that the city ought to take a leadership role in, in kind of, to assist with economic development. Uh, Bob Brown, when he was with the city, I observed him, uh, in kind of high and high, low there assisting, and he was good at the city benefits, just a, a business location, town candidate benefits, and the gas revenues, and, and so forth. I just wonder if, if the time is right, we could have the city take the leadership, or ask it to take the leadership role in economic development. Does TCBA be over there on road, is that legal? And we could, you know, order, we spend, I had that long here?
At least.
At least, and, and, and just kind of let money over there, to try something, we could need something to do. Now, you all get the same emails that I get, that LaVon forwards to us from Scott Freddy. And I read through that, and after about the third time he sent that report out, I'm, I'm just seeing a lot of fluff. You know, it, it's, he's a very good writer, and I've done this and I've done that. But then he's tenure here. Under, under the model that we've been operating on, have, we've been very tough. By now, y'all remember that? Yeah, cost the city five million dollars. Applied, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, five hundred.
Cost us a hundred and something. Twenty is it? That we've accomplished in all these years, under the model that I think is not working, which, uh, a tonka bell and a, a, and a Popeye's, and they're so crowded that you can't get into either one of them.
It sounds like a direct insult.
That, that, I don't, I don't think that's a direct insult.
I don't think so.
I think that's private person in town, maybe it's been known properly there. We need to look at the community of the whole, city, the county, the TCBA, we need to look and think about, is there another way we can do economic development? Chamber Commerce? I don't know, they, they're more interested in, uh, tourist development, barbecue, those stuff. Don't know that's the route we need to go. It's worthy of a short discussion. I know we're not going to make a decision today, but I just, just going to bring it up. I rely a lot on TCBA advice from Thomas and Pam, served, I've served about like one year on that floor, years ago, but I'm a care person. But, but you all know more about what's going on over there than I do.
Well, I, I don't know the answer. I know that there has not been results. Um, we all know that, there's no results. But I don't know what the answer is to get results. I know that since I've been there, you know, it's been, um, you know, talked about a lot that, uh, how competitive the business is. And, um, we do not have a lot of amenities that, um, a lot of people seem to be looking for. And, um, you may, you can't put some amenities in without this, and you can't put that in without the amenities. So, it's like, which comes first, the, the egg or the chicken, the sort of thing. Um, but I know it's not working the way it is now, and my understanding is, I don't think only is the only one that's, um, not so happy about the way things are going. And I don't vote over there, okay? Um, I'm not a voting member, so, um, but it just seems like there's a lot of, something about TCBA. Um, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I know that one time I remember the multi-county, uh, talks, and at that time, my concern was, well, if you pull your money with two other counties, do they have a disadvantage over us? In other words, like, for instance, Madison County, Jefferson County, they, they're right on the interstate ten. Do they have more of an advantage, and will we, that leave us? Uh, I, I mean, I, I don't know the answer.
Those are good points, and I've heard that, there's some discussion, because we may get the short end of the deal, because we don't want to do interstate running. And this, this multi-county option may not be open to us anymore.
Yeah, let me take that. Uh, when that came up, I was on the board, and looked at. And I think that was about the time that it was coming, that they know, that my book, Paulson, Lawson. And the reason they, we think it went reliable to the fellow up here. And they think, at that time, there was a fellow in Valoster, he was working Madison, uh, Long County, I think it's Long County. He was working for twenty county. The twenty county got the mill. Madison ain't got nothing in the last twenty years. They haven't built nothing in the last twenty years, and if wasn't ten, they'd be broke.
Mm-hmm.
So, the revenue's off the ten is holding Madison close. We don't have the ten. Uh, now, so, and I was praying and hoping last night when I was thinking about, huh, I wouldn't care if he had a pole in two twenty-one, period, ten. You know, I, I would like to see that kind of business come to the town, if we have to do that, and then we require that, then we will have some standards. Now, I could tell you this, I was there when, what was the other that was, we had, with them?
Red Bridge.
Red Bridge. I was there before Red Bridge, nothing happened. I mean, they had a good speech, Red did, had a background in IBM, and good stuff, fine stuff. One before him, one was saying, X, same, lost it. Scott Fekker is the only one of them. I don't have a game to lose, but he has impressed me with his doing and even getting somebody some of his pay. We could not get anybody some of his pay. Now, when they brought a fly guy yesterday on South Florida, two gunny brothers hooked up. And he said, he jumped on that and tied on to it like a tie. Then we found out some people wasn't better. Then somebody else, then, then the money was spent out there in Louisiana for some blueprints and things and that. And then, then what was done, is the city had to pay for it, the county won, I don't know who paid for it. Who's the hundred thousand dollar man, what?
County put a hundred thousand dollars in a fly guy.
Okay. And that's good, yeah. It's coming close right now. There's some more work being done. There was some people in here yesterday, or they sold yesterday?
There were.
Might be close, I don't know.
It's real close, because there was.
Yeah, okay. There was some local people in here, there was some people from, uh, financial.
Financial.
I was impressed. Not so much to tell that it's a hundred percent sure, but it's closer than I hope that. Just one big company, now, one good company pays for it all.
I, I had a chance to meet a fellow in Alabama a couple of weeks ago, he owned two hundred Popeye's, rest, it's like we got kids across the country. Amazing, just aside, it was, you know, I got all my work done, probably, you know, sit around campfire, he owned two hundred of those. And I said, well, I, you know, well, how do you pick where you can put them? We just got one, barely, he was on the Popeye's there, and he said, he said, I try to put them where I can get workforce. He said, workforce, that it can't end this. He said, rest of the business is tough, I never known that with our cousins in the rest of the business. And he told me, they didn't build one that was in a town I had a college. And I said, why? It's, it's to, eighty days, he said, no, I can get cooks and waitresses, exchange tools, now, any son of them, exchange tools, it's working the way they call it. They come all the way to this country, from where they said that help you could ever want. He said, I put, we key on, I put, so, but this, this fellow said, he has, he has a group of people, they had every town, they found building Popeye's in. And they, they go around and just ask all the employers around there, you know, what kind of help you, you know, how, you know, how much trouble you have to get help. And he, they, they fill out a sign, stand back for him, and he said, that's when we try, we're put before we can get help. And a lot of businesses won't come here because of that. And there's another thing, the business is already here, it's paying ten, eleven dollars an hour, they're going to fight it right down to the last day to keep somebody coming in that's going to pay fifteen or twenty dollars an hour. Because fifteen, twenty dollars is going to get their best health out of their money. And they, you know, they got a certain amount of their plant workers, they can just sit on that free, some quality money. And that's fine, they keep you working ten dollars an hour, and they know that. They're going to fight any company that comes in here, right down in quiet quality, they go, it's quiet, they flip around and, and do it, fight anything for as many. And, uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's an uphill battle to get a business to come here, because they have people, sometimes, you know, they, they come into a community, they do a little research. Ahead, what he told me he did, and he said, all big companies do that. They figure out how many people they can actually get, we don't, they don't want to hire a hundred people, that's part of our hundred people that account.
Yeah, yeah. But, there's, there's a lot of eyeballs on Peter's counter, right? Everybody comes and visits. Last week, we had the owners of Coors Beer, we had the owners of Reddick Firearms, and the TPO's rule right here at the county.
I know that.
There's big money coming in at David County. On the being looked at, and ruled.
And that, and that's why you're claiming on what they're working with, and saying, I'm putting a big facility here, and they're going to come and approach us pretty soon.
Absolutely.
They've been talking to me about it. And that, they just, uh, they're saying, but they ask the same question, and if you talk to them, could, could they get help? I said, hm, to a certain extent, you can get help, you're going to be getting the best employees from other employers in David County.
So, basically, what they're keying on is labor pool availability.
I said, I could, getting around, I said, you know, look what I'm saying. And the, the labor pool here in David County is, is not as wide open as what people think it is. You just look out and see a lot of people on the street, that's people that's not working. You know, you can see them between eight o'clock, morning, well, block, down there some street, well, they're not working nowhere, you see them in the afternoon, they're not working nowhere. And you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't, like, you couldn't, like, you couldn't, like, you couldn't, like, you couldn't, I mean, seriously. And they can't pass drugs, they, they live.
Well, you know why? Who, who knows who owns that, um, Mayor One business up there, I mean, uh?
All of them here.
All of them here. Okay, but you know, there's people, there's people that have been put in prison, about little Mayor One. And right now, he picks a meat like, he aligns, send it to the girl. I have some big bodyguards, somebody will slip it out of there.
Mm-hmm.
And I will say, bye. Green, run deep. I don't know that. I would love to say, when I walk up on the street and ask the police, why you not working? Can't find you. I would love to say, they had jobs out there, and I have told them, but now, you've got to clean yourself up in order to get a job, but you won't get it.
I've told them the same thing.
Now, when, when you tell them that, there's young ladies out there that probably wouldn't go to work, except sorry, when he is, we straight up can do better. But if there was a solution that I can get me a job, I don't have to deal with that, I can do something else. The culture of what's been changing, and I said it before, I said it again in the morning, we need to do better. And I don't know how we go about doing it, but we need to do.
They're talking to the kids.
Yeah, okay. Now, I'm going to go back to, uh, the, uh, head of the office, I don't know who he's just bringing in. And he can kill it up to it, I, I just don't know.
He, he's better than what I've seen in the past, I've said, and he is, he sticks with something, he calls me a lot of times, when he talks to people, he might call you too. And he does, uh, he talks about several different groups, now, he hasn't talked about none of my few brothers around together. But that's something new that's coming in, that's new. But there's, there's companies out there looking, but they're looking for a workforce, they along with them building something, spending money.
Well, I can tell you that tail county wasn't having people to manage the stuff, but. They downed it, those bump munition plant, it's Buckeye, they have gate, they have other places.
Yeah. Their jobs out there, people don't want to work what it is, man, I, I say it all the time. And then you take somebody that really needs a job and trying to offer, they say, they can't find them, but there's always some issue.
Yeah.
That comes up for you, they can find jobs out of county, it might be in the law woods, or it might be, you know, and some they don't want to do, they find jobs.
I think the whole thing is, most of Taylor County, I know, being out campaigned last year, and, um, I have a lot of questions about the money that we spend with economic development and the, um, results that we get or don't get. So, um, you know, it, it doesn't occur to always be thinking about, is there any way that we can do it better to get more results? Because again, it's like we talked in the beginning, what we need are jobs, and I don't think anybody has the magic answer, so, um, you want to add anything here?
I don't want to add anything else, I think it's a very good discussion.
Okay.
And, and I, I, I don't have, I don't have a solution, I don't either.
The location to, the location to is a plus for Taylor County.
Yes, that's.
They put more people in better paid jobs than anything else.
That's true.
I mean, it really does, and, and that's one thing a fly guy is doing, they're gonna lose if they can. They promised me they would put one of their machines at the location to, one of their, these equipment that they gonna use in their plant. And they train people, I, I'll throw a shoot that machine and reveal that machine out there at the location to, where they can hire people right out of the location to and put them right to work as mechanics.
Yeah, so whether to, the instrumentation or like it, like it's good.
And whether they're in the same, they just, it's like, you just send, it sends a lot of people to work.
Uh, I guess that's what Tim said on that.
Forty case, I have a grandson, he had his all in college, all paid for by his mom and daddy, he just, you know, tired of students. I'm going to my friend's daughter, she's a CPI, they were petting. And he's been at it since he says, bro, stop finishing, and he's at the place where he, they placed his internship job. Guess where they put him at?
Where?
Tough, starting money, fifteen dollars an hour, for six months, all he does is, is an internship. And then he, and he'll even stay there and go away to real, but it does, that's just one case quick.
I got a testimony, my son, you know, was, he was up there working when they started the law and police. He was with the, he had his job, they called him up, he went to Mexico, he come back, he couldn't get a job after that, because they said he might have had PTSD, he had. Well, now he stepped out the path, didn't he? The county had him for a little while. Well, when he got out of that, he said, I said, well, now you don't do that, take it, what you gonna do now? He said, send to Tim Brown, he went to Tim Brown, he got the weapon. After that, he died in Oklahoma now, uh, safety and, or he was certified.
Now the Henry, that's what Henry does.
Yes.
That's what the lesson for.
CPM.
Yeah.
And Thomas Oklahoma.
I'm telling you all a little story about those locations too. They carried, told me out there that they wanted to put in a class out there to train law enforcement officers. And chief of police, several other organizations are trying to block it. Because North Florida Junior College got a, a training center for law enforcement officer. And they, you know, they, they don't want them to be here doing it, but there's a lot of young men that get in law enforcement and women. If, they got, it takes a lot of effort if you get your mind in county, and that's thirty or something miles, but it still, that's all, you know, that, I don't know how many a day. And some of them could, could get that location to, that's something gonna come up there very quick, we need to help, help location to with that. So they want to, they want a Florida class out there and, and where they can train, put people through the officer training program right out here. But now I can't believe they're in there, despite, Wayne Bass comes in and says, Jim, what can we do? I mean, he said, you know, uh, there's some boards that have to go through the state, and chief sent a letter to them that all the people out of county didn't want, uh, that class here at the location to, and even he, even something, they even had Wayne's name on it, Wayne had nothing to do with it. But Wayne proved for not to be, what made Wayne real mad? That's kind of thing happens on the table, it's that, we gonna be a broker that pretty soon, and we need to help to deal with that in West County.
But who was the police chief to make that determination?
Huh?
Who was the police chief to make that determination? To, to say?
There, it's a state organization that does that.
But they take recommendations through who's who.
Wayne's working the paperwork on it now, working in that direction, get it all straightened out, try to get it done, but, I mean, it's, it's something he's gonna need help with, you know? Because it, he could get a lot more officer right out of that county, if, if some of them getting bored driving out, you know, they get to.
I had a brother that lived with me through a divorce, and he was in corrections, and he was trying to get over into the sheriff's department, and he could have to drive all the creation, you know?
Couldn't afford to.
I understand that, right, I understand that situation, but I'm trying to figure out why the, why the police chief would say no.
I get Wayne some explains that.
Uh, he may be an adjunct professor over there.
That's a possibility.
Or some of his people I met would get by.
There's, there's, there's a connection over there with Taylor County sometimes, like right here, they don't want it here, they want it over there.
More to it.
I, I did a lot of work at the location to two years, that at the location to, let's, inside, I believe it was an offer, a program down here, we're gonna teach people how be, uh, mechanics on cap tops, I can use that for example. And this agency, they might take a look and see, is there a need for that, that type, that dog skill set down here, and is there a place, close by, that you can get that trained and fully spend the money? So that's probably the process that you gotta deal with.
Right, right. Well, some of them you were at Florida State.
Yeah, right. And if you can get around that, if you got.
But that letter got to them with Wayne's name on it, it made Wayne real mad, I don't know.
I bet it would be too. Okay, if we can move along, um, number six inventory purchasing policy, I have to put this on there, I know the one that, uh, with the, uh, purchasing policy, uh, you and I have a conversation about it. We figured out some things for me, but y'all made a nice handout here, uh, you wanna make some, is there some point you wanna make on here, or is this, this for our information?
This for our information, this, but to remind the board, um, tangible property is, is an item with a value of one thousand dollars or more. So we do have a system to track inventory, and, and we tag inventory, and we have to go through this entire process when we surplus inventory. But it ha, it has a value of a thousand dollars or more. The reason for that, from what I recall, and not when we make and help you with this, um, several years ago, that value was established because the, the process to track things like weed eaters and chainsaws was, um, it became a little overwhelming. Um, because we, um, routinely cannibalize parts off one to put on the other, and just, you know, rather than buying the immediate or every time we needed a part, it just seemed to make more physical sense to, you know, detain some of the parts out, and that's, that's just one example. But, um, we do not tag each individual tool, um, or chainsaw, or screwdriver, or anything like that, um.
Only tags the, the belt out?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and the reason I put this on is that there was, you know, allegations and pictures from a certain department of, um, you know, equipment that came in and couldn't be found, so I asked the question, what happened to that?
Right.
And we still don't have an answer of what happened to it. Um, so, you know, I was just wondering, is there a way that we can keep up with things when questions come up like that? Because, I mean, you know, that sort of took all of that, took parts out of it, I don't know, but, um, you know, it's, um, if somebody asks, we, we have to say, we don't know. We don't know what happened to it.
And that's not a typical scenario, but I understand a question, but that's, we would have to use the same system if we have a printer that stopped printing that has a value of a hundred and fifty dollars. It becomes quite onerous to go through, you know, this process for removal from assets from the board and track every single piece of equipment. It becomes not a good return on, on the investment as far as that time and, and split up hurt.
What we used to do at the hospital, um, was all, um, properties, which, you know, at that time the county said they owned it all. And so, uh, somebody, uh, came around and put a, a sticker on it with a number on it, and then each department annually, we did an inventory. You had that number on a piece of paper, and you walked around, yes, it's here, or no, it was put in this or that, and it didn't seem that that's for us. It didn't seem like a, a, that big of a deal, it was required, and we did it and went on with our business. So, I mean, if you feel like it's working the way it is, well, um,
I guess it depends on how you look at it. I know that it would be, you know, if I were charged with record keeping, every time we have a printer or a computer that goes out of service, or a computer mouse, or, or whatever, um, that could become a little overwhelming, just trying to keep up with all this records. I don't like the thought that we don't have accountability if someone is not keeping up with hand tools and chainsaws and weed eaters or, or things like that. Um, the only, um, the only response that, that I know to say is that, um, if someone is not being a good caretaker of our inventory, that I would hope at some point that we would be able to apply some accountability.
What happened there?
What happened there to a certain extent, you know, so they've actually fired people in the past for doing things, you know, to, one of them getting gas, uh, gas on.
Well, then honestly, uh, some, some definitely a lot of it.
Right. I guess I'm turning to, it changed after that, but I mean, for a while, I did free gas in the past, you know? But they, I heard they.
I, I'm playing one control, might be that you've got a department, and they have a need for two, what, what do we use, chainsaws? Or that. And, uh, in January, you buy a six hundred dollar chainsaw there, and then in March, you come back and there's another person shows up, six hundred dollar chainsaw. Somebody, the owner you, or, somebody looks, you invoice, we, we all get that. Why you order, the question of, I mean, why do you need another chainsaw, it just bought you one two months ago? And I'm sure you do that.
Yeah.
Now, as far as the threshold, a thousand dollars, to me that seems reasonable, because if you start tagging little tiny items, it's gonna be so pound consumed. Uh, whether it's a thousand dollars, it needs to be lower than a little, I don't know, but the lower you get it, the more paperwork you got to deal with. That's basic, care whether it's, it's a hospital, or a border count emissions, or a truck kind of electric, or whatever, some stuff's gonna walk off, you know?
It's gonna walk off.
It's gonna walk off, you order.
My capability, and I've been a world footballer for over years, and you had two out of that mill.
Now, that mill, you know, I might have been, been a fish here, some of that stuff would walk off.
A fellow one time, um, he had a gallon of antrefreeze in his, in his, in his smudge lock. And it, it, because the truck was running hot on the way to work, and he was gonna go out there and put, put it in the truck, you know? But he just had, took antrefreeze out there, and the judge filled it up there, speaking by a guard channel on, on there, and for a lot, they wouldn't say nothing about it. But when he opened, when he opened the tube box, there was a gallon of antrefreeze, they got a lot of, you know, jaws to middle of a gallon of antrefreeze.
Yeah.
They wouldn't ever say nothing, you know, but he just, had a jug of antrefreeze in there all the time from truck, running hot, he had to go put some in, brought the judge out there and threw it in the trash can. But nobody ever said nothing, but, I mean, that's people, that people just can't help it. And they caught people that are sitting in the toilet like, and firing over the roller coaster.
They were told, told, told to die there in a little box that you could, you know?
Okay. Well, that's another seven.
What I can do, if I can, I can talk to other counties, if they, if they have a way to track their inventory for these smaller dollars, I, I can just say that, you know?
Yeah, but I don't want to put extra burdens either, um, so, you know, whatever you feel like is right, but obviously, you know, whatever you feel like is right. Question number seven, Forest Capital Hall, I'll put this on, as you all know, or maybe commission, or maybe you don't know that, um, when I came on this board in ten, I took on the project of, um, trying to motivate the Forest Capital Hall, and a committee was formed, and we met, and, um, we had, uh, some corporate, uh, donations, a pretty good amount, and then we, um, got some grant money, and so we had a plan for the Forest Capital Hall. We were able to do a good bit of that, some of it you can't see because it was, you know, infrastructure, but, um, you can see the nice seating in there, and the ceiling, and, and, uh, the safety rails and, and all of that, but.
New floor.
New floor, but we had a, a, we had a nice plan laid out, and along the way, or even from the beginning, from the very beginning, there was discussion about whether, uh, about moving the Chamber of Commerce and the TDC, and the TCDA out there because it's on the main drag and having a sign out there, and thinking that, you know, um, people would come in and ask about Taylor County, and it would be a large facility where you can, um, have, um, different, uh, different ones, chefs would come in and, and talk business and stuff like that. Uh, in addition to having a lot of, um, um, activities out there that would make, uh, that would give to people in Ta, of Taylor County more things to enjoy, okay? And along with that, once the fact that there's the four H and the, um, uh, that, that group.
That's your other group.
Yeah, also, we're in there, and, and during the summer, there's a lot of children in there, and at other times, there's the same thing, they have after school programs. So, as we moved along, we, we thought about, well, let's go and put to find a separate facility for these people. And because you don't want to have a Chamber of Commerce people meeting with some, or TCDA representatives meeting with some investors from Japan or wherever, and you've got a, a bunch of children running in and out, and I love children, obviously, and so we, we talked about a, a separate facility. So we got some looking around, and we identified a couple, and, uh, the, the four H people and the fishing people didn't like that, and so then we, um, thought about, well, if I put on the ground, we've got enough of, of space to find some grants and build another facility right there that would be bigger, better, they can offer more programs, and on and on, and that came with a lot of resistance. Uh, they were happy where they were, they did not want, but that was their, that was their take on it. So at that point in time, and the room filled up with people that they had, you know, put on face, but the room here filled up, and, and everybody was against them, they're like, they don't understand.
That's called, deal of the not moving.
Yeah, it, it was like, okay, we're really talking about moving you just right here into a nice, bigger, better building, why wouldn't you do that? And you could offer more after school programs and all that, they had it set in their minds that, a lot of people, because I want to go into.
So they'd rather remain in a part of town where there's no traffic and no, well, you can game in and say, we'll find you a site at, at the Forest Capital site. And we will, we will build you a building.
Yeah.
To your son.
Yeah.
And you just build over there.
I can't blame that, that's what they did, it, it, I fell for it too, and I had people calling me, they beat the drum pretty hard, I had people calling me, day and night.
We, and we're not gonna do it, bust them on the ground before they run now, they would have to really relocate, get to a nice, better building. So at that point in time, after this committee that has worked for eight years at that time on this, and put a lot into it, it was like, you know, we're sorry about this thing, you know?
Couldn't win out of the plate?
Yeah, yeah.
Couldn't win out of the plate?
Yeah, and not only mine, but, but someone that had given a hundred thousand dollars too. So it was kind of drop and. So, it was kind of drawn to that good, you know, we're not gonna do that. So, down those approach, here I'll fall back. Do you think that, you know, we could get back on this and this and that? And I said, well, the only way that I would get back in fall would, would be that everybody's on the same page, we don't have three people fighting against us, it turns into a hundred people fighting against us. And, um, so it, we did want to bring them here for every meeting and, and, and before we even got started, we think it's been interesting. So, I just wanna know from the board, is there any interest at all, uh, let's take this back up to, still trying to make that a very nice place out there, um, you know, we need a road, we need lobbies, we, we've had some lobbies forever, I don't know what the staff says on that. Um, it's because of safety, there's holes out there at night, you can't take your hand in front of your face and, you know, try to get light for several years now.
Road needs saving.
Road needs to be paved and, and, and it just looks horrible out there. So, if we did wanna take it back up, is there any interest on the board for this project at all?
I'd be behind it on a sense. I, I was, I was a bit behind it, I get, I get humbled and cut that through.
I think, I think the issue we had is, um.
Well, I think so, yeah.
I think the issue is, you know, when you come into a town, you would, you would hope that everything would be specifically located. And in most towns, we have the Chamber Conference and all the different, on the same wall, or within the same wall. And just, and we're rotten, and you're walking this, here we're split, we're spread out. If these type of islands are centrally located, then you would have a conflict.
Right.
That it just means the school, it would have a conflict.
Well, it was because the housing was poor and plus we thought, if we moved four H to a nicer, bigger, better place, then we could have maybe a, a convention, or we could have, uh, just, um, we could have some cultural type things, have, um, some, um, pay codes, um, and, and some more, but I know that, um, I put a lot of energy into it and, um, and I, 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 um, I do not want, I don't have time to waste, I have two little children around and plus, you know, other things. So, uh, I have to know that it was something that was really wanting to picture the work with us instead of against us. Now, the one, uh, the one, um, corporate, um, sponsor, I don't know if they'll get back in it or not, that was a real, real loss for us that we, you know, had to be, I think, lost in.
Maybe it, maybe it'll help again if we, if we turn it, uh, whoever wants to build a center.
Okay.
Like they got Madison and Mylville and what we want to do. Put the four H and have all them children, she was talking about running through there in those areas and then have, we could, we could have a lot more things there at the age or center. That, that you really can't have in there, you know, in the stadium, but you, you got such a threat of your children running up and down and breaking levers inside that building right there. One of them's always getting hurt, you know, and all that school. And, and that's just, it's, there's a lot of things to go on there to have a ni- another nice building, you know?
Well, I think.
If you get grants and do it.
Well, my, my opinion is this, we're not past the point where we have any other place to put agriculture apart, the four H. So, whatever we spend our money there, they're gonna still be in that building. And do you wanna pick up the inside of it, very nice, then the next day you come back and shit, this color for him, the mark all over? Uh, I just don't know. I think that if we all went together and it was out there and we fixed it all up, I don't think that opposition, I think they've calmed down a little bit, that opposition they've brought. But at the end of the day, we still would have this nice building. And it would be put to its best use, not that, or it's not a great use for the building, but we still have to deal with, with that energy out there and agriculture. Uh, the payment outside, I get humbled about that. Uh, Dale Young's been on me every time I've seen, he's been asked off business, you know, wants that pine tree taken out, that thing done, that needs to be done and the lobbies certainly needs to be done. And on the inside, what, Pam, what's left to do on the inside?
Well, on the inside, um, uh, do some renovations in the lobby. And, you know, all the woods that came off of the, uh, that's a safe story. And, uh, you know, our family would do some shiplifts and, and make the lobby, um, nice if you, if you've got the TCDA and all out there and, and you have, uh, clients to come in, you know, and, so there's a little bit of renovation there. Um, we talked about the, um, kitchen area, so if you went back, you see, you know, we had, um, the forest festival had their forest festival dance out there and, um, uh, uh, we've had, um, different companies in town that rented for their Christmas, uh, uh, parties where they had music and hangerings and everything. So, we thought about, you know, the kitchen so it can, people could use it, or if you had any damp air, you could stuff stuff out of it.
The kitchen needs to be renovated.
And then, uh, then a lot of this is the exterior, you know, you've got the lobbies, you've got the roads, you've got, um, the building really needs to be repainted, it's two different shades of green and the ground cleaned up some and, um, you know, pretty much.
One thing that we need to do, and people brought it to my attention, we need to put a kitchen in the hall from the office to the bathrooms where you can shut that and lock that and have an opening to the outside where they can't get in there where the stadiums at with all the stairs and all. Where people wanna have like four cup halls without having a nice handicap bathroom to use in there. And that'd be real simple to put another kitchen to that back door out there, some kind of a portable position, uh, dish on wheels, you could just roll it out there and hook it together, just board it right off into that bathroom hall there and then shut the, shut the off there going to the off.
Go to the bathroom and dump the hose.
And it would give handicap people, older people, I've had trouble with them during the fourth, they were all asking about it, so it just, and that all was during the pine tree festival, it was possible, I said, we'll use, use them for the yarn and.
But they do have, um, handicapped accessible for.
They do, but, but, but like the man, one of the gentlemen told me, said, I've sat on and built that place out there and I can't even use the bathroom, what's got to do with him? All the people that were working out there on the pine tree festival, they had keys, they was all using them. But the people that paid for it, most of them couldn't use it, you know, and it made them real mad. And they got to talk about it, they're saying, you know, and I said, I said, I said, what I can do?
Now, one thing, hold on to this minute, one thing that we did, uh, discuss, which I like as a better idea, is to build some outdoor, um, uh, restaurants.
That would be.
And you could, you could attach them to the back of the building there.
Right, that would be good.
And have that on, uh, have the on, uh, you know, the, the two restaurants with men and women and.
Right, right.
And.
That would be good, but what was, is, is we rent the fine, for the pine tree festival, no, we're the county, don't put that on, you know, Don and him does all that, they do the parlor and, and all that business. And they rent that during that day, and that's true. A barbecue cook off and all that kind of stuff. But all of that would give access to that bathroom if you had a way, you know, you could, they could, people could come in and use that nice bathroom that they thought, they built, they wanted to use, you know? But what got to do with them, most of them used, you know, and they could use.
Yes, we built the outdoor ones outside.
I could saw that.
That would solve all those problems.
But, but you know how expensive, starting from scratch building a bathroom is, it's very real little kitchen in the hall, you know?
Right.
You think what we spent, seeing that you built it up on the bathroom, do you understand that?
Pam, if you wanna take it over, I'll support you in every way I can.
No, I'll agree, I'll agree.
Now, I call the bill every day, going, you.
I just wanted to test the temperature of the, of the door before.
I like that, and my being the field, that's, that's, that's. What we're gonna decide, we gonna do another one or we gonna use that, go there and work on that?
Say again now?
Are we gonna build another building or are we gonna go to Forest Capital Hall and work on it?
Well, if we did it, we'll have to work on dollars because we've already put a lot of money in that.
Well, when the group was up here, we're talking about that, the four H, you know, we were going, I'll put it in some way else.
That's right, I've been on the ground, so we could get a grant to build him, a, another facility similar, not big, but another facility right there on the ground.
We got cleaning rooms there, there's just acres and acres there. And now raining down there, you don't ever see nobody there, nobody uses anymore. I mean, that's a good high hill down there, but right, right out the back door going west where they, you know, have all those edicts and stuff during the pine tree festival, all that's just around the building.
I know halfway.
Pay your rent that way.
Yeah, that's right. Those people down there might've had some opposition, go down and ask them, the, the time, what you think you need and what works.
Well, if I decide that I wanna get back into it, I haven't really decided yet, I'm still kinda hurt over, you know, I'm sorry, but that was, that was a big, you know.
Yeah.
That was a big slap in the face.
I don't really understand there, there's, the whole thing behind it, probably, you know, that they just, I pay the rest charge, I'm not wanting.
Yeah, I mean, they really need to get again deep, we don't want, we go out and walk out.
I really, I feel that, I'm feeling through a place that I feel like that.
I feel like that, I felt like that at that time, but.
I did too, I might've been wrong, I hadn't been wrong before, but.
I'm like, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think, well, even if he was one of the ones, I've tried to work two, three years prior to all this, with this individual he stood over there. And let's find some property and we identified some property, I found a hospital, foreign accident, and he just totally beat, so I dropped, I, gotta help get something. I think maybe we'll find a different atmosphere out there then.
I'm not sure.
I think we will.
Okay, well, if people get back with me or if I decide to cut space back with them, uh, and just see how many, uh, you know, but anyway, I couldn't.
And before, before we forget, let me tell you, do you know where your shiplift lumber is?
It's, it's.
It's in that old hospital.
Yeah. Oh, it's in the old hospital? Well, it's supposed to be in a storage building.
So, that old, old ward building up back in the hospital?
Uh-huh.
See, it, it was.
It's not in the main hospital.
No, 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 it was the vent, it was, was first, first, it's, it's.
I know, right.
So, I inquired where is that wood, Miss Lake? And from that question, it got moved from the city storage property and inmate security over there. So, before we sell that old hospital property.
We'll, we'll get it out.
We'll get it out now.
What happened with that? Actually, Mr., Mr. Lake, he did not ask if that wood could be moved. It got down to the point where I got a call when he was not here, that we had gone within the next couple of days.
Okay.
So, we, we asked the inmate crew to take it down to a storage building on the old hospital site.
How, please, not leaking all that over?
It's supposed to be secure, but I already wrote myself in that, that we need to make sure that we find another place for it, isn't it the hospital, but that's a fail.
Well, no, we're in love, right, move.
A lot of it.
I'm gonna sell and beat it. Oh, Lord knows, and then those.
Of course.
Not, you know, you buy, you buy twelve now, this internet has, you set it, this is full to each of the torch stuff. Oh, yeah, I used to be a fine lumber guy, I'm a. You know, I'm gonna, now, you're gonna split that and make shit stuff.
Mm-hmm.
If you did well.
That's what we were talking about, is this, but, you know, use what was there and all of it, it means something to us, you know?
Well, they didn't have to do that long yet, but.
Okay.
The power that more.
Yeah, and we were talking about it, starting the stage last year, what is, now, can I ask if what can be pulled in this on?
I, I hear the question about lighting and paving, but I don't think that we have any funding for either one of those projects.
They didn't keep them, fought a whole sale out there, I think took care of patching the road out there or something, and he's kinda saying in my eye that, but you, you, I remember you were dead one time, we didn't have the money to put in that, or it's kinda.
Well, it's not in our, it's not in our C I P. Um, we don't have any capital money, so it's not this year, but it's, it's, we need to get some potations for that and, and ask the board approvals for that.
Well, I think we need to add it if we can figure out how to fund it. If we can't fund it, then we can't do it. But, you know, I think, I'm telling you.
Need to get intensive designs, because we need to pay more than that, what's already, we got asphalt over there. Right up where you park it, the lobby, that lime rock section, it needs to be paved all the way up there.
Yeah, if one person's crying drunk or bracing a lot, they're talking, fix and park them out.
Well, we already have a, a lot of things, somebody's helping us.
There's a lot of that, yeah.
But then when you come out of there at nighttime, and I have in the last, you know, not long ago, it is dark through there, you can't see.
Light, light, I remember, we need to get some lights out there, that's not that big thing to get some good dust, dawn light, clear up out there. That, if it wasn't under closed down, like, you know, that closed down on, we wouldn't even.
Well, when you park all that is in, you pop all the way down to the entrance and you walk out at night.
See, you'd be all the way around that, you know, because there we're parking in down around the end of the building, we're about there by the, uh, generally, you know?
But it's a plant plant, on, so what we need to do, because all that's fitted together, you gotta go down there and pay it, and then that place where you pay that's gonna put an adage on, a player, so. Lot of work needs to be done, it's gonna take a lot of money, and hopefully our big dollarers will forgive us.
Well, we could at least do light.
Well, get it locked, we need to pay that most important thing out of that. That payment money, you know, we got a little bit of money in the common account and I would be generous with some of this, for one money. I would too. I, I would, I would.
I'll put some mine in.
I'll put some mine in, we can just make the payment happen pretty quick.
Because every, people out of every district use it, that's why.
Exactly, that's.
Yeah, so I mean, we just.
So, let's put, let's put the payment down, and, and, and a high priority handle the light.
Okay.
Now, if we can afford any light, let's do it, territory, they can put up light. And, and you pay, you pay the light bill, try a lot of a month of peace or whatever it is, you need ten, so you do it.
But it's putting around sales and having to pay light.
And then we go out and do the maintenance, we got to change the bulbs, do it, and all that.
That's right.
Now, if you wanna fence, you run right there and poke and all that, if that's what you want.
We don't need that.
Nothing, that's, that's not the.
We don't need light, start somebody looking for those, they look at how they walk, how far they're going, that.
I know Don had done some research, and Dustin, I think, had done some research and they had taught to do, and there's all kinds of different lights, but different costs for mugs and all that, but, um, yeah. Okay, let's move along to number eight, uh, boat ramps, and I just, you know, I, I know last year, speaking from what I saw at Keaton Beach, one boat ramp, a lot of times there would be security at the roads there, where you turn off the beach road there, and, you know, they'd be sitting in the truck because they get, there was nobody coming in and out. And how much an hour are we paying for that security?
Three minutes on light.
No, we do not, no.
How much is your cost?
Oh, we have your cost, it's forty five, forty, I think, when I, I think it increased, but I was gonna depend on the. We're just paying, I think, money, a lot of money, and I'm just wondering if there's any way that we could save any money there?
Well, now, I will say that, um, last year, um, we, we had fewer deputies, instead of having two at each boat ramp, we had one at each and a floater for the season, to, because we thought maybe we were overstaffed, um, at the boat ramps, the deputies. Um, is that how, I mean, we, we are trying to control those costs and it seemed to work out fine because then the floaters would basically go between the two boat ramps.
Could you, from my viewpoint, what was your, uh, observation?
If I can explain to you what I would like to have seen?
Yeah.
I would like to see more sheriffs out there.
At, at the time, when you need them, and.
That's right, and especially during that time. Sheriff's sitting in his car, you got a logjam, you got thirty cars trying to get in and out of there. I've seen sheriffs stuck in traffic, but they respond to a call, they got their blue lights going, they can't get down the roof. And that's just the one guy there. Imagine if we had nobody there.
But what I.
What we need is more.
What I saw was, uh, two of them sitting in a truck or car, they felt that it's no need for him to stand out and go on the road when there's nobody there for it. And I saw that quite a few times.
That's that midday shift and you shouldn't anybody coming in and.
Well, then maybe that's where we could flip a little bit or something. I, I was just looking for this cost thing, way, well, I think the concern with that is.
Well, I think the concern with that is, it's hard for them, from what I recall of the conversation, um, to get someone to work off to, commit to an off-duty schedule. You can't really say, okay, go home while it's not quiet, and then come back and get shit, because it's hard to get that type of commitment for off-duty jobs, they, they want a set number of hours, and, 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 like I, we did reduce it from two at each ramp to one at each ramp and a floater. Um, but that's.
Yeah, but if you've got, on the beach down there in, in the galaxy, I mean, you can have six, seven thousand people, just on that block alone, on that one block, I mean, it's pretty, pretty crowded down there. But you got a good amount of crowd, and you don't got one sheriff sitting there. I mean, our constituents there don't mind the sheriff sitting in the vehicle, because we know he's only there for twenty minutes to a half hour downtime, because we knew the two hours before that, he was out there running circles out there. So, with, with the influx of people, we have more people that are gonna initially need more shit.
Cause he comes across a sheriff force down there, oh, I have a lot of time, you know, there's a big influx of people, and like I say, they're out there all day, and then he comes with a big old ton of them, and they come all in, and mount loads, and then first lot, three quarters in, he gets his truck, yeah, well, I, well, I can say, you told him, we want to go out here and work today, he says, I finished. So, let him sit in the truck and sleep.
Okay. I'm not going to sign anything for sitting in a truck, I, that's not what I'm doing, because if he's not doing anything, I'd be sitting in the truck too.
That's right.
I'd sit out there in that hot sun, but I was just looking to see, to see if there was any cost saving opportunities that don't sound like that there's any there, so let's, let's, don't count it in.
I think we did put that in place last week.
Okay, now, the other thing, I know, and, and this is the last time I ever bring it up, but, um, I know we talked for eight and a half years that I know of, about the fees and everything down there. And I'm gonna sit the three o'clock, because we gotta have time to prepare for the three o'clock, but are we okay with leaving it like it is, or do we wanna increase the, um, uh, the amount, or just don't worry about it, leave it like it is?
My feeling is, before, I, I was trying to do away with the side, all of them, it's all together, and had stickers on them, where we, you know, everybody had them or not, it was one of the two, there wouldn't be no gift, they put, put their money in the box, everybody didn't agree on that, we didn't, a lot of people kicked back on that. But the sticker fee, that's mighty cheap, as they only compare to other accounts, I mean, I mean, that, I mean, that's real cheap.
Didn't Mark come to make us a proposal, we need to go up to twenty-three dollars or a twenty-dollar sticker?
He did, and I think.
Thought that now he could pay the tail tax on it, without us having to do that, plus the merchant would sell them and make, make a couple, make a buck or something.
I believe we're still, he's still waiting, that the process with, um, S A B C, I believe it is, to ask for permission to raise that at all is pretty onerous. I'll have to check back with him and see if he moved that project forward, or if he saw the process and decided not to do it, I'll bet.
Well, we have a process, all I'm interested in saying, since we've talked about this, I know sixteen years, like, is, is, uh, is there we can do that? That's a small change, but.
I know the information we have to provide to request permission for the change, it's, it, it, it almost seems like it's not worth it. By the time you go through all of the requests for, you know, how much we pay for the maintenance cost, you, you saw that, you know, even, even he said that it's taking a lot of hard work, and information provided, and we're gonna turn around and say, okay, let's drop it then, let's not worry about it. Well, now, one thing I will say, if it, if it, if it helps anyone's feelings, um, if you recall, last year, we hired a part-time co-enforcement officer, um, to enforce, um, you know, our ordinance regarding boat ramp, you know, our fees, and do issued citations. And I know I see fewer and fewer and fewer citations, because just his presence alone, I think, has encouraged people to buy their stickers, and, um, we ended up combining two jobs, um, as a cost-saving measure. So, our part-time co-enforcement officer is also our building technician that works up front, so we turned that into one F T E, and I, so we, we have, I think, maximized our efficiency, that's where that goes, and have saved some money, um, and I can give those numbers to you.
Okay, now, uh, if you're a district, and I'm not trying to just come into your business and your district, I do see it down there some of the time, a little bit of the time, um, and down at Hoggis Park, we put forth an effort, half or four years ago, went down and pulled off the sand first, uh, all the new stands, and tried to make it nice, and we said, okay, we're gonna keep, we're gonna plant, and we see green coming up, we're gonna plant, we're rounding up before it ever gets to the sand first stage, and, and, and being down there last summer, even looking now, there's quite a bit of green growth out there, and last year, it was sand first again, like, we had not done that. Um, and as I said earlier, even yesterday, there was a car from Rich Plum, you know, there were maybe three or four more cars there yesterday, here in early February, we got spring break coming up, and I know a lot of our local people do go down there, take their children during spring break. I just wanna make sure that, that, you know, I don't want my little children walking out there, or me, or anybody else, and teach a big school of sand first, um, and then, you know, the rest of them, they're kinda going there, and now they're just checking on them, uh, you know, they just, maybe, we need to make sure that there's paper on them, there's towels down, they're clean, there's graffiti, or, you know. And then I had asked about the roof down there, because when you drive up, it looks like part of the roof is a different color. I got an answer about that, but I forget what it was, but still, when you drive up, it looks like white patch, the roof with a different color tan.
It's because it's clear for natural lighting, so I think it's just the age of the roof, I, I understand what you're saying, it looks like a past.
Yeah.
But it's supposed to be more of a color effect.
Oh.
So, what I can, what I can tell you is that, as part of our settlement, um, with D E P, um, instead of paying a monetary fee, um, we have launched the Hoggis Park Cleanup Effort, um, at, at our settlement with D E P, we've had crews there on and off, um, this week in last week, I believe, and they are supposed to be painting the, um, the, the painting tables.
Is that Danielle in green?
Probably.
Does it look like it comes from another country?
I think I'll remove it to see what he.
He's trying to pick you up and cook.
There was a need to see we'd off the, off the beach area, um, trying to get all the sand out of the parking lot behind the sand pit, which is finished now, which I thought looked really nice, um, and proper washing the bathrooms and, and all that, and we'll have before and after pictures that we submit to D E P. So, I would hope that the end of this project, this cleanup project, we would have made some progress, but, um, part of the instruction to that crew was to please get all the info up.
Well, see, that's our one public, um, beachfront, and people just turn off the night scene to go down there, plus the local youth, and, um, I just, you know, I think we should, when we can, pay a little more attention to the upkeep and how it looks, and, uh, I know I get complaints about the playground cover, it's, it's not adequate, it's, it's by far not adequate. It needs a structure of some kind of something, and then, um, you know, if we have enough money from the whatever, that maybe we can add some other things there, but it's just our one and only.
Well, we wanna make it, we wanna make it in the trash.
Yes.
We wanna make it in the trash, and, um, you know, when we first came up here and coming into a lot of pounds, and we, we thought, well, why haven't these things been done for years ago? People have their priorities, and, and we just wondered why.
Mm-hmm.
When we decided to invest on the beach down there, um, it was actually.
The layout.
The way that the beach was laid out is what made, uh, made it a lot. We enjoy it down there, we really do, and, but there is room for room.
Yeah.
You know, there's, uh, two deliveries in life, but just a, a little bit like.
What's, what's the condition of the parking lot, I have to complain about that.
It's part of the asphalt.
Yeah, the asphalt, of course, of course, y'all know Dale Young, he's free of this for five, he needs the asphalt, he's coming out of the town, he's, and a lot of people there, we, we spent some money going down there and redo that asphalt or do something to that parking lot, and I was like.
I don't see any grand.
I, I know where you come from, Dale Young, we're contract, go do something.
I don't see any grand.
I didn't, you know, figure it out, that's them.
I don't, I mean, you know, there's water, and water wouldn't end anywhere, but I don't see any asphalt.
I didn't see any, yeah.
I didn't either. I, I would like, go ahead and throw, uh, item nineteen there, which was speed hogs, you know, we talked about speed hogs on Keaton Beach last couple of years ago, or seven, maybe it was, I don't know, a year or two ago, and just being down, recently, quite a bit down there, trying to get ready for the spring and summer, cars are already flying through there. I mean, they fly down past our house, all along there, all the way to the end, and you've got children out on bicycles, you've got adults, young and old, that walk, or even out walking now, you've got golf carts, uh, and during the summer, you've got a lot of golf carts and a lot of people, and, Jim, you talk about down there at the boat ramp, it's a wonder somebody happened to run over a hitch.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's the same thing going on down to Hoggis Park, now.
The last time we discussed those speed bumps, remember, they used to have them down there a year ago, remember when they had speed bumps? They had yellow, big yellow fiberglass ones.
That's speed bumps, not speed hogs.